All right, I will call this work session of the Hillsborough School Board after it's ordered. As you all know, during this evening's work session, we'll be interviewing candidates to fill position seven vacated by Adrian Martinez. Everyone has a folder in front of them with the interview questions. The notes you're taking need to be turned into rows at the end of this meeting. Does anybody have any questions about our process this evening? So we'll interview the candidates one at a time. We have a set order on the agenda. Michael Smith is not here. We do have a video we can play of this, but hopefully you've got a chance to read his responses to his questions that are in your folder and have been available online since Thursday. And then we will have deliberations and we will vote, I guess, sort of on.
Nancy, there's a folder over there for you.
All right, so are there any, yes, are there any other questions on the process?
Kind of inside with the supplemental questions you needed.
Oh. Yeah. If it's a, do we reserve those for a tie or do you mean like if you want to ask a follow-up question?
Well, it says supplemental question you needed, number seven. Are we just going to ask that at everyone or no one or?
My impression was that we were doing it if there's a tie and we had to.
Like we bring them back in to ask.
Yeah, maybe it's for the deliberations or whatever, like if we have a tie and the, that was my thought, so your thought?
When we do administrative meetings, we have extra question or two for the second round as well as any clarifying questions that we know based on their answers.
When they're in, we'll ask questions one through six. We'll do our deliberation. If we feel like we need more information, then we'll do that clarifying in the number seven.
Perfect. That was my thought.
Perfect.
It did come up at some point in some discussion about sort of follow-ups and while we all have the questions we're reading, I guess I feel like if you have a follow-up for somebody based on something they ask or say, anybody, I think feel empowered to ask it. Is everybody okay with that? But you wanted to stick, it feels like I'm a little nervous about straying from the script because then somebody might get preferential treatment because we didn't just stay with the script. But I know, I know that, that I think if somebody has approached me and said they might want to have a follow-up. So how would you get prepared to handle that?
I think it would make more sense if the question, if the answer you received was unclear in some way, like a clarifying question. I don't think it would be fair to ask essentially a different question with all of us when we want to get it. That's my opinion.
That's my thought too. Does everybody sort of agree with that, that process?
Agree.
You good? All right. Erica, any questions or anything to add?
I'm good, thanks.
I think Lisa was the chair last time we did this, right?
I'm Ben.
What else?
Great, so probably us. All right, our first actual board member is Chris, right? All right, so go ahead and rose and go grab. We do, well. You're right though. I'm complaining about air conditioning on birthdays sometimes. Especially I've been complaining for two months about how rainy it's been. Hello, we have a seat for you right there. We're all here in the room. We have Director Lopez is online. The owl in front of you is what people online will hear when you're speaking. We thank you for being here today. We thank you for your application to fill the vacancy for position seven of the Hillsborough School District One J Board of Directors. The questions are in front of you. We will take turns asking these questions. Please keep in mind that we have a lot of 30 minutes total for this interview. You may use any notes that you brought and use a timekeeping device if you wish. Do you have any questions about our process? All right. Director Kim is our first question.
Great, thanks for being here. So the first question is why do you believe you are the best applicant for this position?
Yes, so for me, education is extremely important. When I was young, I grew up poor and I didn't have a lot of opportunity to access some of the programs that other kids in the area accessed, namely like private school programs, things like that. But there were teachers who saw in me what I hadn't already seen in myself. And they were able to foster that, those skills to get me through school, to get me into programs that ultimately led me to join in the debate team, which led me to getting a college scholarship, which led me to meeting my wife. So you could say that everything good in my life right now is because of the educators who helped me get to where I am today. And so it's very important for me to ensure that all the children, all the students in our area get that same type of help and education that I do. Also, I have extensive data analysis, data mining experience. And I think that as a board, we can utilize data a lot better to find where our strengths and our weaknesses are. You know, do we know if there's a fourth grade teacher at a school here that is just teaching the children how to read at such a fast level, such a great level that we might be able to utilize their methods? You know, we can use data to find that information and analyze what's going on in our district and I can bring that to the table and you know, help analyze that kind of data and bring it, bring some solutions to get our district to a world-class educational district. Also, I have two children who have come through the Hillsborough School District in non-traditional ways. And I think that having that experience and knowing that there are those non-traditional programs out there, but that at least to me, they seem to underutilize. They weren't known, you know, for all of the students and I I want to be able to bring that to everybody. I want to be able to show everybody that there are many different ways to get a world-class education here in Hillsborough. And having that experience can help others understand what they have at their disposal. And finally, I have been present and involved in levels of the school board. I was on the CCAC. I have been, you know, spoken to you guys a couple of times in public comment. And I, you know, I followed the school board, even when it was virtual, watching the meetings at home to ensure that I stayed up, stayed up on everything that was going on with the board to ensure that I knew, you know, everything that you guys were going through. So I feel that all those reasons make me a great candidate for the board.
For question number two. How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial, positive changes for students?
First of all, I think building relationships with the community is extremely important. The board is the face of the school board, oh, sorry, the school district to our community. So the board needs to be out there. We need to be out there helping community members, stakeholders, students, parents, all understand what's going on in the district and helping them feel that they have buy-in to what is going on so that they can feel like they're part of the process. So being out there in the community, talking to people and and ensuring that they understand what's going on is the best way to to bring forth that positive change because those stakeholders, those parents, they're going to feel like they're bonded to the process and they're going to be more active in that process and therefore giving us more information that we need to make decisions and drive that change. But also on the school board, we need to shape policies that will ensure that what we want for that education for those students is there for decades to come. We need to ensure that somebody can't come along and destroy the process, they're starting to destroy the progress that has been made or any, sorry, or any type of disruption to that education with those students. So ensuring that the policies are being created and shaped in the way that would help those future students who have, may not even start in school in the district.
Thank you. I have a question for our question three, which is what responsibilities do board members have regarding advocacy for the Hillsborough School District locally and state?
So locally, I kind of already talked about that. Being present to the community, ensuring that you are out there showing the community what you're doing and showing the community the progress that's being made is extremely important. Getting those stakeholder buy-ins. Talking to local community members, local community partners about what they expect a well-educated student would look like when they leave the the school district because we need to know what those companies are looking for in workers essentially so that they know, so that they can you know, create this community that we're, that we're in and have the best, I don't know how to say it, but have the best students and the most well-educated workforce when it's done. Also, ensuring that the, the community in general knows the direction we're going and knows the direction that we want to go and keeping them apprised to all of that stuff. So again, being out in the community and ensuring that you talk to them and also listen to all of the voices that come forward and go further than that, finding those voices that are underrepresented that may not feel comfortable coming forward and going to them and bringing the discussion to them and ensuring that their voices are heard. At the state level, we need to advocate for stable and adequate funding for the district, ensuring that it is top priority for the legislature to bring that, bring that money to us and ensure that we have the appropriate funding we need for the world-class educators, for the world-class programs that we want. But also going further than that, we need to ensure that we're advocating for for and against laws that may either help or harm students of the district. We need to make sure that we, our voices are heard when, you know, laws, for instance, like laws in Texas and Utah that are banning LGBTQ plus students from competing in sports or using the bathroom for, for their appropriate gender. We need to make sure that we're advocating at the state level against laws like that while advocating at the state level for laws that will help our students and protect them.
Erica, I think you have another question?
Yes. Okay, question number four. What has been your commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion within our local community?
Yeah, so I work for the sheriff's office. And a few years back, a law was put in place with the, short name of the law is called the stops law. Essentially is requiring data collection for all traffic and person stops at the, you know, when an officer goes, whatever. But it only requires the collection, it doesn't require the analysis of it. So I took it a step further at the sheriff's office to ensure that we are analyzing that data to kind of suss out any systemic problems we may have at our agency not just at the state level. Creating reports that show is it possible that we're pulling over a certain ethnicity or is it possible we're ticketing or warning at a different rate and ensuring that we recognize those problems and seek to fix them through training. Another thing that I've done locally is I was on the, the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. And while I was there, I was a loud and strong proponent of the comprehensive sexual education curriculum, ensuring that the LGBTQ plus students and educators in our district saw their stories and saw their, their identities in that curriculum and ensuring that it brought those stories and those identities to all the children so that they could understand members of their community better. And I wanted to make sure that there were no, no roadblocks into that being talked to the kids. Also, while on the the advisory committee, I worked on the language arts adoption. And on that, I wanted to ensure that we had native Spanish texts for the language arts curriculum and not just a English to Spanish translation. That way, the, the Spanish language learners could have a more authentic education when it comes to their language arts and ensuring that those, those stories and those voices were heard as well. And finally, back at the sheriff's office at the county level, I'm on the Data Equity Committee. And what that does is we ensure that not only is the data that we're collecting from the community at the county level equitable and capturing all the information that we need to do, but also the reports that we generate have that equity lens because so much in the past, we didn't look at things like race and gender as far as reports coming out of the, out of the county and we needed to make sure that there were no systemic problems in those systems that we're reporting on. So we have that lens now to ensure that we see those equities in our data.
Thank you, Chris. I have the next question. What are the factors upon which you will base your decisions as a school board member?
Right, so mainly kind of going back to the community engagement. I think that the, the most important part is as, as elected officials, we need to ensure that we are we are representing the people in the area, but we need to go further than that, not just to listen to the loudest voice in the room, but to seek out those underrepresented voices, those voices who don't feel comfortable coming to the discussion. Seek them out, go to them, get their voices, get their stories, get their what's concerned, what their concerns are and, and take that information in as well when making our decisions because it's extremely important not to just be there for the loudest in the room, not to just be there for the person who speaks up the most, but finding those, those voices who, who are not as comfortable coming to the, to the discussion and seeking them out, going to them. And I say this as somebody who's been the loudest voice in the room, so I do know that you know, it's, it's not just about me, it's about finding those small voices and ensuring, not small voices, the voices that don't feel comfortable.
Thank you. I have a final question for you. What are the current challenges facing education, school boards, education slash school boards, and how would you navigate them?
I think the most challenging thing facing school boards around the country right now is weaponized misinformation. I think that we can see this in, in issues like the critical race theory, which has been all over school boards, all over the nation. And while we all in this room know that critical race theory is not taught in K-12, it is not taught in bachelor programs, it is a postgraduate style, sorry, postgraduate theory that is taught in law school. However, it has made its way to the school board level, has made its way down there to say that anything that is teaching about bias, anything that is teaching about equity is critical race theory. And critical race theory is bad, therefore anything teaching about inequity, anything teaching about equity or bias is bad. And it can go, it goes further than just CRP. We see misinformation around the idea of indoctrination. People who are coming to school boards, coming to their schools, thinking that teachers, the school boards, principals, whoever is trying to indoctrinate their children into some sort of lifestyle or, or religious political beliefs, anything like that. Again, there is no, there's no actual thing happening there, but this is a huge campaign of misinformation that's going around and, and it's being fought in the school board, you know, meetings. And the final, you know, big piece of misinformation that I see out there that is, that is going against the school boards is the idea of somehow that LGBTQ students and educators are harming other students. Somehow having an LGBTQ plus teacher is somehow harmful to a student, somehow makes them less of a, have less of ability to teach those children. And same with the trans students who we just want to compete in sports and we see that them being attacked all over with, again, a very big misinformation campaign that somehow these students have some sort of advantage or are doing this for that advantage when over and over again, we see that that's not the case. So I think that the best way to overcome these challenges is to educate ourselves, not just, you know, ensure that the, the students are educated, but ourselves as a board. Educate ourselves as to what is truly going on and see this misinformation for what it truly is, which is just a false narrative and understand the truth that is actually happening and the harms that are actually happening so that we can say, for instance, if somebody comes to a board meeting and says, "Trans athletes are harming my child" in some way, we can see that and say, there's no evidence of that and that in fact, these trans athletes have more to overcome and more pain and heartache than the than the non-trans students and therefore they need to be protected more because there are these angry people active.
All right. Thank you for your time. Please feel free to stay in the waiting room and wait for the results. We will be swearing in the chosen candidate there this evening during our registration session. And yeah, we have four great applicants, any of which would be, I'd be honored to serve with. So thanks again for applying and if you're not one chosen, please stay involved in the district. We can use your voice.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yeah. I want to waste a bottle of water. I thought we should offer him a bottle of water. That's unfair to Chris. Would be unfair to water in other cities else? Yeah, like not, not mauling my head, like it's unfair that would be unfair to Chris if you didn't offer him a bottle of water.
Amazing, amazing.
Oh, yeah. End of the hall, I think, yeah. Erica, thanks for being here. Absolutely. We thank you for your application to fill a vacancy for position seven of the Hillsborough School District One J Board of Directors. The questions are in front of you. We will take turns asking these questions. Please keep in mind that you have a lot of 30 minutes for your total interview. You may use any notes that you have brought and you can feel free to use timekeeping device if you wish. Do you have any questions for us about the process? No, I feel pretty good. It's great to see everyone. All right. Director Kim has our first question of the night.
Hi Patrick, good to see you. So the first question is why do you believe you are the best applicant for this position?
Yeah, well, I guess I'll very briefly start by first saying Director Martinez leaves big shoes to be filled. You know, I didn't know her that well personally, but I'm from working on the board and on the curriculum committee, it's, I've seen her dedication and she's a big champion of the Pathways Center that we're all excited to see come on board this year, so it's daunting to be succeeding her, but that's something that I was, you know, when, once it became public that this vacancy was going to exist, a number of friends and community leader folks invited me to consider serving. And I thought about it, including a former member of this board, so I got to talk a little bit about what exactly service involves. I've been around folks, but it's nice to just get a real firsthand explanation. But in the past, I'd been asked to consider different roles in the community, including elected roles, but I'd always found there's someone better for the role or someone I can support. But when this one came around and folks were talking with me about it, I realized that there were some unique fits. I felt like I could offer something to the, to all of you in working together as a team. I served for several years on the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, including some of the folks in the room here. And on that, in that role, I've gotten to see firsthand a number of the ways we so we've had core curriculum reviews. So for instance, we did a language art review recently where we looked at, I got to see how the process starts with our expert educators putting out requests for proposals and finding certain curriculum. You all know this better than I do, but being there firsthand on the committee, I got to see how, you know, it's piloted in classrooms. We had to go into classrooms and watch those pilots happen. And then seeing how the expert educators came back from the committee they formed with some recommendations and the committee really evaluated that and finally passed along to the board. But then also I saw new programs, like I think, I assume, I won't go over all the things I wrote in my written statement, you likely read it, but we looked at things like the Aviation Science and Fire Science Program and I saw, God, this here, he's our executive secretary on the committee, so he shepherds us along. And so seeing that over the years has really given me a lot of appreciation for what we do here in Hillsborough School District. And so that coupled with the fact that I've served on some other community boards that have given me a perspective for what it's like to be directly accountable to the public as all of you are. I've served on the Washington County Board of Property Tax Appeals for a number of years and that's pretty high-stakes, sometimes controversial matters. People who feel their tax valuations are wrong and come and present their evidence and dealing with large sums of money in corporate accounts, but I've gotten to be a, be a listening person and thoughtful and so it's like over the years of being in that role has given me a lot of experience working with public input. And then I've also been as a citizen, an advocate for causes I care about with the state legislature for many years and probably the top one is, is mental health funding and reforms because of family members I think can be better served, but education funding is certainly something I've spoken often about with our legislators and I think that school board members really need to be willing to, to advocate for their district and for the school funding system as a whole. I think we'll talk about that later, question sent here in advance. So for me, it's an opportunity for me to broaden my experience if you feel like I would be a good addition to the team because I've worked on curriculum issues and I've worked on budget issues. I served on a budget committee for a smaller public district. Because I've worked on curriculum issues and I've worked on budget issues. I served on a budget committee for a smaller public district in the past in a different city I lived in. But then there are areas I haven't worked on such as policy, school policy, which I know from board meetings, you you are very very interesting and consequential decisions come before you. So it's, I bring these years of experience plus having some areas where I'm excited to grow and learn more. A few other issues, since we have a few minutes about why I was willing to put myself forward after a lot of thought. I did give a lot of thought because it's a big commitment of time and energy for a volunteer position, so I wanted to be sure I wasn't doing any frivolously, that I really could put the time and energy dedicated that it deserves. And so I didn't think a lot about it. And first of all, I think that we need someone in leadership roles who are committed, absolutely certain of the value of public education deep to their core. I think about, I was raised on the North Oregon coast in Astoria, in a small town, and I was very privileged and fortunate to have a very loving, I was raised by a single mother, I have a very loving mother, a very supportive family environment, but we had very little material. And so schools were for me a door, something that was an opportunity. I remember we didn't have when I was young, we didn't have a computer in the home or the internet or anything like that. So every morning, I remember especially when I got into middle school, going early and I remember the library, I guess it was, who would let me into the library, school library, and open to look at the latest news on the computer and so I just even in little ways like that beyond the core curriculum, I think schools are a pathway, opportunity for equal access for all people in our community. So I'm a real core believer in the value of public schools and I think that's essential. And I'm sure a lot of folks who share on school boards feel that way. We hope so. And then I think it's important for people to have a collegial and collaborative style who are on boards because there's a reason we have multi-member boards. We don't just have one person making all the decisions because we need to hear everyone's perspective. And I think throughout my professional and volunteer service, I've tried my best to demonstrate that. I believe folks would say that I have. You know, it's a little cliched, but I really do think about a lot of the things we do in similar roles to this as being about like an orchestra where, you know, that the violin group on its own isn't going to be able to produce the same type of music that the whole orchestra does. So we all have to pull our weight, we all have to do our work as individuals, but what we produce together is far different in quality from what we would produce even individually And so I think that's something that's important for a board member to be aware of and think about. And then finally, you know, one of the things that a few of my colleagues who invited me to to serve in this way mentioned to me is that it's important for boards to reflect the need communities they serve and we've had some wonderfully representative students, wonderfully representative student board members, but I don't know that we've had as many board members who identify as members of the LGBTQ community. And so that's not the primary reason. But I do think after reflection, it is important that communities reflect, boards reflect a variety of backgrounds and the communities they serve. So all of that were things that went into my willingness to put myself forward and say that I would enjoy serving of all of you.
Okay, question number two. How do you believe a school board member can be most effective in making long-lasting, substantial positive changes for students?
Absolutely. Well, the first thing I I thought about when I saw that you had this question was thinking about the the value add that board members bring. Because what I mean by that is we have expert educators. All of you in this room know how rigorous the teacher and administrative licensure process is. And so we're not going to add value by trying to duplicate what our expert educators are already doing. But what we can do, I think, is twofold and what we, what our role, our central role in the system is, it's twofold. First of all, we listen to the community and get feedback from the community on what they want out of schools, what their interests are for their children and for the community more broadly, what they feel schools need to be doing. And that's something I've tried to do in a relative, in a smaller way during the years I've been on the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. Every time someone's asked me, you know, talking about schools, they come in conversation with different people in different fora, I ask their opinion, what do you think about how how things are going in schools? What would you like to see? What are you most proud of? And so I've sought that feedback and then I've used that or tried to be a productive member of that committee and talking about curriculum. But oftentimes they talk about things that aren't curriculum. I didn't have obviously any opportunity to effectuate those comments, but I think that for a board member, all the more so, is being visible in the community and collecting feedback like all of you do. And so with that feedback, you're an advocate for the community and you're, and I think you shouldn't be afraid to ask tough questions of our administrators. I don't mean by that, like I say, duplicating the role that they perform as experts. What I mean is being willing to you may have perspectives in representing, I may have perspectives in representing the community that hasn't been thought of. And so being a sounding board to say, why exactly is this happening the way it is? And what can you tell me about this? I think asking those tough questions is a benefit for our administrators because it it gives them an additional perspective and it makes their, the work they're doing even more likely to be a real, a sounding success. And it's also great for the community because once you've gotten the answers and you understand fully, you can then communicate back to the community what's happening and they feel like they, their concerns have really been heard and thought about. So I think that listening, feedback, asking questions and then returning, giving feedback in the other direction is really key to being long-term, building a sustainable district. I also think that, you said in your question about long-term, I think you said, and I think that viewpoint is really important because you know that the board is asked often to consider individual cases that come up or circumstances or approve individual contracts. But I think it's always important to keep in mind, what is going to give our students build a sustainable district for our students over the long term, give them, to make them given the schools they deserve. So keeping that always in the back of your mind as you're looking at individual decisions, something I've tried to do throughout my professional and volunteer parting rules is to keep that long-term view and even considering short-term questions. We talked about collaborative approach, so I won't go over that again, but I think that is important to building long-term success is having that approach. Another thing is keeping the individual in mind. What I mean by that is obviously our, our leaders, superintendents, assistant superintendents can't do everything themselves. They have to have a systems level view to make sure that all of the employees, we're a district of what, twenty thousand students? And so they have to make sure that everyone, they have to have controls in place to make sure everything's running appropriately. But I think also as board members and our administrators as well, we have to keep the value of the individual student in mind. Each one is unique, each one is precious, each one is valued, each one faces unique challenges in their family life, in their academic life, in their social, emotional life. And so doing our best when making decisions to keep in mind that that level of individuality is important for the long term. I was very briefly, I'll just say, not too far afield, but I, I was thinking when I was invited to apply for this, my mind was drawn to things I experienced. I was attending school myself and I remember like they say, I'd grown up on the coast relatively poor. I remember my mother was a hotel house cleaner and, but she, she didn't have a car when we were young and so we'd take the bus everywhere, unlike TriMet. The bus is in a small town, there's one bus in the entire city. It was notoriously rerunning late. And so one day it was the winter and we had to go to a Western Current Teacher Conference or some school function and we were waiting for the bus to get home and it was pouring down rain coming sideways. So we were getting all soaked and finally the bus came, just went by and didn't stop and the guys saw us. And so there's a cafe across the way. We went over there to dry off and I remember they made these nice deluxe hot chocolates for my mother and I and gave them to us free of charge and that just, maybe why I say that is it reminds me, twenty-five years later, I remember that. I don't remember much else from that age. I remember that. I think that illustrates that these people do just as little acts that they forget about the next day can really stick with people. And so I think that while we're looking at broad policies, and that's a core function of the board, I think remembering those little acts of kindness that people may remember decades on and they just make a positive difference in their life. I think that's pretty important as well for community leaders and board members. And I think finally, I just conclude by saying, I'm wearing this because it's Pride Month, but I usually I wear to these educational events, I'm advocate for education, a little pen a friend gave me of Mr. Rogers' trolley because I really appreciate Fred Rogers' advice on, on children and the open atmosphere he brought to things. And I remember, we all know he said, we comfort children in times of tragedy by telling them to look for the helpers. But I think it's important for us to remember those of us who are adults have the ability that we shouldn't just be looking for the helpers, we should be the helpers. We should be out there trying to do our best. Obviously, that was about what tragedies happen, but just in general in the community, we have a proactive responsibility. So that's what I think as far as long-term.
Right, we hear a number three. Question is, what responsibilities do board members have regarding that
Yeah, thank you. I think that's one of the, the core functions of the school board, really. Locally, I talked about already how we champion our school district communities a little bit with that feedback loop I talked about earlier, so I won't repeat that. But I think also with other institutions, we could be champions for the community, for the schools, talking about wonderful things they're doing so people know about that. And then I think at the state level, like I say, I, people look at their their tax bill, their property tax bill and see that schools are a big chunk of the property taxes. And so they think, oh, well, this is a county funded thing or a, a school district funded by property taxes. But of course, we know that for several decades, it's really the, the state that funds schools, that the equitable student formula, there's a lot of complications. It's not perfectly equitable, but essentially it guarantees our state revenues and making up to a per people amount. So if we want schools to be better funded, it's really not a local property tax thing. It's, it's advocating the state government and I remember going to rallies and events and meetings with legislators to promote the Student Success Act back when we were trying to get that done a few years ago. And that was a really big, we tried for several years, you all were big advocates too, I'm sure. And it didn't happen. And then finally it came together and that was really exciting. It wasn't everything we all wanted. You know, I think the quality education, all the U M reports, student success, that wasn't quite up to that level, which we'd like to see, but I thought I did a lot of good. I think that we've seen the corporate activity tax in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one a little bit lower than because of the pandemic. And so I'm interested to see where that goes because that was the student success that's driving funding. But we've actually seen pretty pretty optimistic budget reports. I think you all know the state budget is mainly divided into healthcare, education and public safety prison funding, really. And so those are the big drivers of the state budget. And so because education is such a big part of the state budget, when we see favorable reports, budget reports, that's good for us in terms of adding resources we need to provide the services we need to and using that funding wisely. But I think that we really do need people to continue as board members to really be advocates at the state level for, for funding and for implementing wise policies that don't, don't impose unfunded requirements on us that really, that do the good things that the state laws are doing or have done. A number of them I supported strongly, but that fund those. So
I'm next with question number four. What has been your commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion within our local community?
Thank you for the question. I've tried at every organization I've been a part of professionally and in my community volunteer roles to drive this forward, to make it a priority. And one of the things I've learned, I don't know if everyone would give this same answer, but one of the things I've learned is really to listen first. It's easy to come in for a leader of an organization to come in and say, I have this fifteen-point plan that's going to solve all the issues and going to address everything. But the first step is to listen to the affected communities who may be having barriers to participating and to equity. And so listening first and then listening to experts in the field who have worked on similar projects before as to how we promote diverse equity inclusion. And then taking that feedback and making decisions from there that reflect what you've learned is what I've tried to do. I think the Hillsborough School District's doing a really great job in a lot of ways with outreach and services. I've been impressed. I remember from my first time on the curriculum advisory committee several years ago, they've always had simultaneous, very high-quality translation into multiple languages and that's a very small thing and very basic step, but I think it just shows that not only every organization, even educational organization has been as good about that, a high-quality simultaneous translation. And so I, I, I think that a lot of ways we're doing things well, but I want to listen and hear ways we could be doing better. It doesn't mean being passive, ignoring our obligation to really work to include folks, but it just means being, listening to what's needed, not coming in with a preconceived idea of I have all the answers in this area. Obviously, I think I mentioned in my written materials that the inclusion and support for LGBTQ folks, and especially in education context, young people has been very important to me personally. You know, in the past, volunteering with the Trevor Project, which was great work on, on anti-bullying initiatives, I, I think when I first started, I was pretty shocked to learn that for transgender youth, the suicide rate is up to four times higher. And it's really unpleasant thing to speak about, but we have to speak about it if we're going to work to fix it. And the, when the Student Success Act was passed, there was an LGBTQ student success advisory group that produced a student success plan for LGBTQ. And that's, it was in twenty twenty, I think, and it was updated more recently and it was saw. And that has some really great recommendations on specific to Oregon, what they've seen as far as bullying and harassment and real evidence, data-driven, and what some policy recommendations for things, the school district as far as I, I'm aware is already doing here in Hillsborough, but that best practices I think we should continually look at. So that's just one segment of diverse equity inclusion. I've also obviously tried to work on promoting racial and religious and all other forms, but that's just one I particularly have worked on, have acknowledged of. But again, I think it's essential that we include that in everything we do and be willing to step up. And I'll just conclude by saying one thing, I remember many years ago now, when I, before I was involved with civic and community work, one of the first times I testified before a public body, I was a little bit nervous. It was a city council meeting where they, there had been some federal immigration enforcement actions involving children and a group, a coalition was working to have the city council pass a sanctuary city resolution. And I spoke with people in the affected communities and they explained why that was really important and for safety. And so I, like I said, I was a little nervous because I didn't have much experience before public groups like this at that time, but I, I put my shoes on and went and gave testimony and support. And that may not have had any impact on the final result, but it was something I remember because I think we have to be willing to just, even in small ways, go beyond our comfort zone in promoting equality.
Thank you, Patrick. I have the next question. What are the factors upon which you will base your decisions as a school board?
Yeah, that's a lot of factors, but principles, I guess we can talk about probably in the abstract. So first of all, the paramount overreaching overriding obligation is the well-being of our students. And so that means number one, the core academic mission to prepare people to have the skills necessary to lead productive lives in core areas. It also means the social and emotional well-being of our students. I feel very strongly about that. As I said, I was privileged to be raised in a very loving and supportive family, but I know not everyone has that same privilege. And so I want our schools to be loving and supportive spaces for for our students to develop the social, emotional skills that will let them lead not just productive careers, which is essential, but also productive, happy lives. So that the well-being of students is number one, always in our taking decisions. And then I think that the concept of stewardship very much comes into play because we are stewards or trustees for the community as leaders. And so that's why I mentioned earlier that process of getting feedback from the community is so essential, ongoing for for leaders in elected office because we make decisions based on what the community interest is and what their what their advocacy is. And that means, I think it's important to note, both people who are in the room and in the office. And what I mean by that is, probably would imagine is that we need to listen very closely to people who are able to come and speak to us and testify before us and you know, certainly our, our other stakeholders, but also we need to be proactive in thinking of the interests and trying to find out the views and desires of those who aren't able to attend our meetings and those who aren't able to be with us. So I think that being a steward on behalf of people in the room and the rest of the community who wasn't able to be there is really essential in making decisions like this. Something I've tried to keep in mind in the different community boards I've served on. And then I'll, I'll leave this question there. I think listening, stewardship and the well-being of, of students are the key principles.
I have your last question of the night. What are the current challenges facing education slash school boards and how would you navigate?
Yeah. That's a, a big question as well. So I think there are four buckets I would put things in. First is that we've talked about a little bit, I talked about is funding. How we want stable, we want adequate funding, which I think we're getting close to achieving here in Oregon. We also want stable funding. Our, our system our systems, um, the way our tax and finance system works can leave stability to be a serious concern. So I think we need to continue to advocate for stable funding so that we can really really make promises to our students that certain curriculum are going to be available, uh, that we can keep those. I think I I can't count the times I've been on the curriculum committee and we've approved something new and wonderful and and all all committee members have just said, well, we think this is so great, you know, are we sure we're going to be able to offer this? And obviously, the answer is always it's dependent upon what the building administrators feels appropriate, but also on funding, are we going to have uh sufficient? And so I think that that stable funding is a real challenge that school boards are working with. Uh, and the reality is that's harder in down times. And if we have one of those in the future, really difficult decisions after maybe because our funding system isn't perfectly stable. Uh, although big improvements with students accept that. And then the curriculum is the second one. This is an area that I have a little more experience in just from being on the committee for several years. Um, I think that I've worked hard to understand this, and I've seen the value of regular reviews, and I've seen the differences between materials in terms of the ones that are best fitted to prepare our students, the ones that have um the appropriate level of rigor, but also with digital integration and with the tools that the teachers are actually asking for rather than ones that maybe just presented to them. Um, so I think making wise choices around curriculum is a second big challenge for school boards, and they face that by being informed and relying on groups like the curriculum advisory committee in addition to um, the key role of of our expert educators. Third, I think is community outreach. Uh, I I don't want to repeat myself. It just is so core to what I view the board's role as and why I was willing to put my name forward that the community needs to feel heard. We need to feel like um, the community has a voice, that they know what's happening, that they're aware of what's happening, and our our Hillsborough School District team does a great job of outreach, but it has board members who have a special role there. Um, and then that we're advocating on their behalf and then turning around and advocating on the school's behalf, our community to share why uh these these good decisions are being made by the school. Um. And then the fourth thing I think is stakeholder relationships is a challenge and opportunity for boards. So we're seeing some studies showing that um, and certainly anecdotal, we have a lot of anecdotal evidence that uh staff burnout uh in some states across the country is is an issue, but during the pandemic, because that was such a challenging time. And so I want to understand uh what our processes are as a board for making sure that we have good recruitment and retention initiatives for all of our staff and that they are feeling supported. There's a culture of respect. I think we all can think of how valuable and how special our teachers were to us when we were going through school. And so um I think we want to make sure the board members that they always feel valued, that we know what a difference they're making in students' lives, because the pandemic was a really tough time um for students. And we have a key obligation to make sure no one is left behind for the students, because of there's some studies that show partial decreasing academic results during the pandemic. But um also of our teachers that really just worked hard with the students and their families, to parents, teachers, students, everyone worked so hard in the pandemic to make remote learning work, because it's not a a natural fit for everyone. But we really need our stakeholders, teachers, parents, and all of our employees, our educators, staff, to feel like they are valued by the board. So I think funding, curriculum, outreach, and stakeholder relationships are the big things I see for for boards.
Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, please feel free to stay in the waiting area and wait for the results. We will be swearing in the chosen candidate later this evening during our regular session. I just want to say, uh, you know, thanks for your application, and we have four great applicants. I would be honored to serve with any of them if you end up not being the first we chose. I hope you find a way to stay involved in the school district. We appreciate your voice.
Thank you all for your time.
Say hi to say hi to former school board member.
I think she's coming back.
Thank you, Lisa.
You are more patient than I am because I got mine my thing and I can see it sewed out of my share of my clothing continuously for the next hour.
I totally understand, but it was it was just so awesome. I mean, having you guys up there to try this. Yes, and people are definitely gracious. Everybody else lives their heart, so.
Yeah, I got lucky. I got lucky. I got you. I got to sit on the stage and try. Our family graduation, I think, that did not get rainbowed. She admitted she got upset just before the rain started falling.
At least before the the pour down.
Like I know that I've been there, but it's all about my life.
I just want you to know that I've been talking about it ever since.
My parents made fun of me for not knowing whether I was going in for a handshake or hug with either of you.
We did the exact same thing. No, you didn't. Eric, Eric and her daughter are totally okay. We love you, Erica. It was all about you then days, sweetie.
Thank you for uh being here today. We thank you for your application to fill the vacancy for position seven of the Hillsborough School District One J Board of Directors. The questions are in front of you. We will take turns asking you these questions. Please keep in mind that we've allowed thirty minutes total for this interview. May you set any notes that you brought, and you can uh use a timekeeping device if you wish. If you have any questions for us on the process.
I don't think so.
All right, the owl there in front of you is how the online people will hear you. We have one director who's joining us online. So just be aware of that. And uh we will go ahead and get started with Director Kim's first question.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, for being here. Uh, the first question is, why do you believe you are the best applicant for this?
Good question. Um, I'm gonna plead a little bit of ignorance here. I'm not entirely familiar with the backgrounds of all of our school board members. So I'm curious how many uh teaching licenses we have amongst our school board members? None?
I have two.
Anyone else?
She has taught.
I've been an emergency teacher certification counselor.
Okay. Sure, we'll count that.
I uh don't have an ordinary license, but I've been adjunct at two universities.
Okay, great. And do we have any degrees in teaching or education?
I don't have a teaching license, so yes.
Yes, I must have at least one, sure. Excellent. I as well have both of those. Um, those seem like assets that would be valuable for uh school boards to have. Um. I used both of those assets as an employee in this district for twelve years as a classroom teacher. Um, you probably saw in my initial um answers to the application that that working relationship came to an end. Um, but in that role, um but perhaps in this role, uh that would be a place where I could use those assets uh to my to advantage to an advantage and and help out students and people in in the community.
Question number two. How do you believe school board member can be most effective in making long lasting, substantial, positive changes for students?
Um, I think primarily by putting those students first when making decisions. Um, it's it's probably easy to include a lot of factors when making decisions and deciding on policy. Um. But if you can put the students and their day to day in a classroom at the forefront of your mind when making decisions, I think that's probably the most effective thing you can do to make long lasting, positive changes. Um. I'm assuming that this board has probably in the last year or two uh made a decision or um implemented a a policy um where they didn't have the students first, front and center as the top priority, the thing that made that decision for them. Perhaps funding came into play. Uh, perhaps teacher contracts came into play, maybe buses, maybe facilities, any of those things. There are legitimate reasons uh for making any of the decisions that are to be made. But like the question says, if you want to be most effective and you want to have long lasting, positive changes for students, you put those students and their day to day experiences in a classroom first at the top of your decision making.
Thank you. And we're at question number three. It says, what responsibilities do board members have regarding advocacy for the Hillsborough School District locally and on the state level?
Um, yeah, I think that that is the responsibility to advocate relentlessly, loudly um for our students, our community, as well as all students. Uh, anywhere in the state, um communicating, educating our community um about funding, bond measures, any way that we can advocate what's going to be best for our students. Um, we need to fight for resources at the local and state level uh for all students. Um, if we have traction with uh state representatives, um, we should be using that traction to to help our students and all students across the state. I think we should be, I think we should have a singular focus on getting what's needed for every student uh to provide the best possible experience um that we can for our students, for students across the state. Um. I think we should be Andy Dufresne in the movie Shawshank Redemption. He, in his quest to get funding for a library, he wrote a letter a week to the state um representatives. And when he finally got a reply and they gave him some funds, he said, that's fantastic. Now I'll write two letters a week. That should be our mentality as we look to support our students and our community and all students in the state.
I think I have the next question. I have question number four. What has been your commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion within our local community?
Uh, so this is probably the toughest question, I think, um in this list for me to address. Obviously, I'm a white male. And this conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion uh is probably a spot where I need to take a backseat a little bit um and let make sure that other uh voices are are heard and not try to take center stage and make it about me. Um, as far as my commitment, I don't know. I'm not sure I have a a great answer for you. I put a sign in my yard. It says, we believe and lists a couple of things. Uh, Black Lives Matter, no human is illegal, women's rights are human rights, and a few other things. Put that up two years ago in the wake, in the onset of COVID and uh quarantines and in the wake of George Floyd, a few weeks after it went up, a knock on the door. A young man, uh, probably seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years old, asked if he could refill his water bottle. And my wife said, of course, chatted with him, and he said, you know, I I struggle with some mental health issues. He was a person of color. He said, it's been a tough time. I'm out for a walk. It was hot and I needed to refill my water bottle. And I looked around and this was the house I chose because that sign was in your yard. This was the place that I felt comfortable coming up and asking. Um, and then he asked, he said, would you mind in the future if if I need to to get out for a walk, can I just come sit on your curb next to that sign? So of course, um, I don't know. I put a sign in my yard. But as educators like to say, even if it helps one kid, then that's all you need. And that then it was worth it, and it made a difference. So I'm guessing the other people you've interviewed perhaps had more in depth quality answers for that question. Um, I'm not sure. I'm still trying to figure out where the straight old white guy fits into some of those conversations a little bit. And again, not wanting to make anything about me, but giving a a voice to those who who should have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Uh, question number five. What are the factors upon which you will base your decisions as a school board member?
Um, so I think there's probably a few factors. Um. First off, um, making decisions uh should involve input uh from the people, students, families, your teachers, your administrators. Um, decision making should also involve data, research, studies, best practices. I think um, you've got to have reasoning for the decisions that you make. Uh, the an example, even though this doesn't directly apply to the to the board, um, but if if you look at comprehensive sexual education, um, that came about um as laws, you know, from from Salem. And the people who came up with that curriculum and put into law that that curriculum needed to be implemented, uh, it wasn't just people saying I think we should teach this, or I think we should teach that. Every step of the way, every piece of that curriculum had data behind it. It had research behind it to show why this curriculum should be implemented. I think as long as you have that reasoning, a solid foundation for why you're making the decision that you're making, and it's not just this is what I like, this is what I think. That's what you need to use to base your decisions on. So using the research, using study uh studies, best practices, and using the people that you have um access to, teachers, administrators, um, people who have experience and knowledge. You've got to pull from all of those resources to make the best decisions that you can.
Thank you. I have your last question tonight. Uh, what are the current challenges facing education slash school boards? And how would you navigate?
Um, I I think uh the main challenge I've seen uh facing school boards is politicization. Uh, it seems as though school boards have become increasingly political. I've seen stories on a national level of groups trying to band together. I've seen stories on a national level of groups trying to band together to quote unquote overtake school boards um based on political viewpoints. Um, we've seen some of that here in Oregon. There's been concerted efforts in Salem, uh here in Hillsborough and uh Beaverton um for people to take their political views and put them onto the school board um and make educational decisions based on them. Um, and so this kind of goes back to the previous question, I think. Um, how would you navigate those things? Um, you have to make sound uh logical uh decisions. Um, and you have to communicate your decisions and why you made the decisions that you made and uh go back to those factors that you use to make your decisions and not leave it up to your political views, your personal views, or anything else. Um, but to consider um what, what challenge or or decision is in front of you and take input from as many places as possible.
Uh, thanks for your time. Please feel free to stay in the waiting area and wait for the results. We will be swearing in the chosen candidate later this evening during the regular session. As I said, yeah, it's, it's great that we have four really qualified applicants. I'd be honored to serve with any one of them and uh if you're the one not chosen, please uh find a way to stay involved in school district. We appreciate your work.
Absolutely. Thanks very much for having me in. Nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
Do you want your water bottle?
That was there.
All right. So we are ahead of schedule. This is when we would have interviewed um Michael Smith. We do have uh Julie Rose Comas, um, she's seen the video, but I don't know that. Uh, do you have the ability to play Michael's video for us?
Hello, my name is Michael Smith, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. And I feel it's an honor to be able to be interviewed as a candidate to fill the board vacancy. I won't be able to join the interview process either in person or live online due to preexisting plans that involve travel without internet connections. So I'll miss the opportunity to interact with you during the process. But I really appreciate and want to thank Rose especially for accommodating this format. I've made this short video to introduce myself and I've also written responses to the interview questions down, which can be read to the board. Best wishes with your decision. And again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, tech team. Um, hopefully everyone's had a chance to review Michael's responses. Well, I'm sorry not to read them to the real event, not to have people read them this word. So um the plan has always been for us to read them at our own time and consider those. Um, so we are ahead of schedule, which is great. Um, discussion time. I've only done this twice in my time, so I'm open to how you guys want to go ahead. What do you want to go around? You want to just have a discussion at first? I'll leave in the end. Um, some will nominate, uh, or I'll say nominate dropping. Um, all four candidates will be, oh, so we do that first, right? So we do that.
I just wrote down what your, the procedure was last time.
Okay.
The last time, it looks like.
I guess it is discussion on emotions. So that, that makes sense. All right. So um.
We do them in here?
Uh, nominations. Discuss the candidate. And we, we do um decide up here uh which person will be, it's not, um. Yeah, we probably do motion everything downstairs.
We'll do the, yeah, nomination down.
The actual nomination.
The actual nomination of the one person. Right now, um, you'll be nominating people to discuss that.
To have this, oh, so that that is the parliamentary way for us to be able to discuss each one of the applicants is the.
That's what you did last time.
Okay.
So if that's the case, if I nominate.
I think our nominations open.
So if I nominate all three.
You'll nominate the one person.
All four.
Well, yeah.
For discussion. You'll nominate one person. She could nominate another person. Lisa could nominate another person.
I think that's what we did last time.
That's what they.
Yeah, I guess. We, we all nominated, but we had four last time too. So so nominations are open and I think we would like to discuss all four applicants. So I'd love to have a nomination.
I'll nominate Chris Adzema.
All right. Anyone else want to nominate anyone?
I'll nominate.
Okay.
Can you just restate the two people that were nominated? Because I couldn't hear.
Lisa's nominated Chris Adzema and she has nominated Patrick McGuire.
Okay, thank you.
I nominate Michael Smith.
All right. Eli? Uh, I'll, I'll nominate Kelly McLean. All right. So now that we have four candidates to consider, um, does anybody have any discussion they'd like to lead off with? I'll suppose go last, but I'll get a start since we're reluctant to. So I, I, I appreciate the depth of knowledge that we heard. Like I, I think all four of these candidates probably really understand the job is more than I did when I ran the first time. Um, which maybe says more about me, but um, it's fair. I see the head now. Uh, um, but yeah, I, I, and I, I kind of like how three, I, I don't think Kelly has served on the CCAC, but I, I like how um serving on the CCAC has sort of laid a good foundational knowledge with the district. Like I, I, I appreciate that three of our four applicants have certain capacity here. We should continue to promote that when we are recruiting for the CCAC.
Erica, your hands up.
Yeah, I just, I just also wanted to say that I appreciated having um the different backgrounds and experience that the applicants um came with and also just the um involvement in the school district. Um, that, just that prior connection, I think, is really helpful. Um, and the other thing I just wanted to also think about is the makeup of our current board and what, what, what is it that we are needing? Um, what skills and strengths do, do each of those particular candidates bring that can help us in the work that we have ahead for ourselves, especially, I think, um, looking at advocacy. That's something that um a lot of people don't really think about or um or consider as, as for us, our school district, that we don't have, you know, a position that is a lobbyist. And so we as school board members have to do a lot of that advocating for our district. Um, so I just appreciate a lot of those answers that were shared today.
Yeah, uh, I thought Chris and um Patrick's answer were pretty exactly on that advocacy. They, I think they kind of understand, they both seem to understand that we don't have lobbyists. That is the board member's job to sort of do that. Lisa?
Uh, I definitely agree with um with what Erica and what you said, Mark. Um, about advocacy and strength with those answers. Um, I think for me, I felt most like Patrick and Chris had done more homework about um what specifically our needs are at the board. Um, and so I think they were the standouts for me and for trying to narrow it down. And I will say it's very uncommon for me to learn something about education um or state level, like advocacy stuff. Um, I've been missing this for so long, but I wrote down two things that Patrick said that I did not know before. Uh, and that blows my mind. So I didn't know that we had an L T B plus advisory committee. That act that was maybe like recommendations of best practices for school districts across the state.
Thank you for saying that Lisa. I, I could not have imagined that we had that and I apologize. It's just true. But um, I, I'm just going to say it. Um, while there are two candidates for me that are um that were a standout per se, I find myself disappointed by everyone's uh response to the diversity, equity, and inclusion question. Um, but I'm also going to confess at the same time, in my day job, people miss this question as well. And what it tells me is there's something wrong where people can't articulate what that really is. Um, what was I looking for, you might ask? I, I just wanted to know that, did you know enough about equity and inclusion that if you put those together, you might get diverse? Did you know that this is part of, this is part of your emotional intelligence and how you deal with other people? So I, yes, there was something I was looking for and nobody got that. But I continue to see this over and above from adults all the time that are struggling to answer this question because they don't want to say something that might be considered politically incorrect. And also I was a little disappointed in everybody's answer. But I do have two that I think were probably the better answer for me or the, the better overall performance. Um, and we'll see what the vote comes out today.
For me, I was very encouraged and impressed by um the applicants that we have. Um, knowing that there are people out there who are willing to give up their time and energy to to serve in a volunteer capacity. Um, is, is something that is encouraging to me, um, especially in a day and time when trying to find volunteers is increasingly more challenging, um, especially if they are non paid positions. And so I just want to first and foremost think really all four of them, and Mark, I think you, you said it just kind of spot on, all four of them. Um, we would be honored to serve as colleagues with and, and especially for those who are not selected to move forward. Um, just wanting to encourage continued involvement in the community. Um, I echo both you and Erica's um remarks about just how, how cool it is to see that there are so many of the applicants who have been um already engaged in our community. And to me, I also have two applicants that kind of rose to the top for me as um as being the most prepared to, to really hit the ground running, especially in um the timing of this board appointment where it is fulfilling the resignation of, you know, uh, of Yedira and, you know, overtaking the last year of her appointment or her uh board service. We really do, I think it's, it's really important for our board to consider that uh we need someone who is ready to serve day one. Um, has a good understanding of uh of the type of governance that, that we are taken as a board and have a good understanding of what board members do and what our role is uh in the community. And so that I, I just am, I'm very impressed by the slate of candidates.
Uh, to your point, I liked how Patrick sort of mentioned that, like the, that time to end the thing. I like that it's at least on his mind. Yeah. Does everybody had a chance to sort of, you want to say any, any general comments yet?
Um, general, we have a specific effort or?
No, whatever. Yeah, however you want to do it.
So, yeah, um, I, again, I echo everyone's comments about the candidates applying and and willing to set aside that time for the board and what is considered. Um, for me, I like, uh, I don't know if you all had a chance to read Michael Smith's comments, but I thought that a lot of his comments that he made were spot on. I think I really appreciated the fact when he talked about the challenges facing education of school boards about the priorities, principles, and prudence. Uh, section, I think, uh, with the primary function of the school district to provide the best possible free education in a safe environment. He mentioned the uh principles and deciding how to use our resources and prudence about the wise and judicial use of those resources. As many had mentioned tonight about the stable adequate funding piece and not knowing from ear to ear how that goes. So that's mine.
Well, I, I, I too liked how Michael led with sort of policy in that question to answer. And I think Chris did as well, like that. Like it's just in my limited time on board, it sort of feels like one of the best ways to affect long lasting is to have a policy in place. And I've had, and Michael did be with that. I think Chris led with that too. Um, yeah, I think it, I, I think it's unfortunate that the timing made it so Michael couldn't be here. Um, I don't think it's any, it's not detrimental, but I think it can always, it could hurt to be there percent. So, um, so it's unfortunate that the timing worked out. So I wasn't able to be here with us. Um, and for, yeah, for me, I guess I'm sort of where Lisa is. Uh, I don't know if we're ready to vote or how, how, like, I, I feel like I'm sort of debating between Chris and Patrick myself. That's where I'm sort of at is. Um, probably, yeah, like everybody was, it was, it was interesting for Kelly to like say, I'm gonna have a good answer this one. So I did. I appreciated that honesty, but also like you had the question ahead of time, maybe bring an answer.
Well, I also thought it was. And I didn't mean to only say something negative, but um, question number six, when we talked about the challenges. Everybody seemed to understand the challenges. The real ones, I thought that was, I think that speaks highly of people being in tune to what's really going on. Everybody seemed to be able to identify the actual challenges. And, and that, that is impressive because then that means that you don't have people who are, you know, are kind of pie in the sky and looking at the clouds and thinking that everything's wonderful. Or that everything is going to be easy because you're on board. It just makes it harder, right?
Whether you're a point or not, I might borrow Chris's term weaponizing disinformation. I felt like that was it's a pretty solid point, but I, I, so.
I wrote that down.
Uh, and I, I, I think everybody kind of mentioned that sort of polarization and how things are. I, I did sort of like how Patrick noted it, but then kind of took it in a different direction. Like, like that wasn't as you, you understand that we're facing this sort of polarization, but he had like his four buckets and while they all sort of tangentially, it was like funding and like, yeah, it was, it was, it was interesting that he took it in a little bit different direction.
I, yeah, I, I, I also agree. Uh, it was each have a good understanding of the challenges and the battles here. Um, I guess I'm mostly going to focus on Patrick and Chris. Those are the couple that I need. Um, I, I just felt like I think Mark had points. I feel like the, yeah, the answers was more what I was looking for. Um, for those two candidates. So, um, that's where I'll be focusing, I guess, just making this thing up to. Um, and I think kind of rereading the notes that I took. Probably I'm leaning more heavily towards Patrick. Um, for a couple of reasons, I underlined that he said two, uh, two times. I like that. A lot of people don't. Um, it's one of Ajay's albums, the advice to us, because remember on the board, you're one of seven. Um, people come and dance their thing and if they are like two every day, but really you have such other people that be on a team. So I, I liked that. Um, talking about being collaborative, I think that's something that's important when you have such a large team. Uh, I really liked his answer to question three when I asked around um advocacy and talking about the tax statement, like. advocacy and talking about the tax statement, like, who knew that was a thing, like, somebody feels whoever wants to do that, right? Volunteer to have people yell at you about your property. They don't understand, but he did for some reason. And we talked about the funding for education, which is something that I was actually speaking about, or maybe board members. He actually said Q E M, which hasn't been there, is what Q E M is. I've heard the board members say Q E M since Kim left. So that was very exciting. I underlined that too. And he also talked about the idea of having, you know, our board reflect our staff and our students, and a way you can do that, which we found out, which is minimal to about. So I think that I'm probably leaning most heavily toward Patrick, because I'm the one who wanted to be the first to number two.
That resonated with me too, that, that when I read, you can't help but, now we've done it for a while, read people's voter pamphlet statements. I don't, I think representative, president, or whatever, there's some high in there. At every, not truly our districts and applicants, but all across the state. It turns, now I've done it a little bit. Leading with I will, I will, I will, in a board position, it's all we, it's all team. I think Patrick did, he specifically referenced that, yeah.
I, I do have a question about before we make a decision and as we move forward. My expectations were off because I knew that we're, we're going to have a person who couldn't physically be here, but we allowed him to provide a written interpretation or write us with written answers. And so my expectations were off the chart for what this person was going to write. And he didn't, and then when I was somewhat disappointed with what I read, then I was like, okay, so how can we better this? How do we, do we do this in the future? Is this, that might be a separate question that we need to discuss later, but I Monique, I appreciate the fact that, that, that there was that one question that he just went, wow, and I was like, yeah, but then the rest of them weren't there. And I'm like, if I get the chance to write something and writing to somebody, I'm gonna argue bloody hell out of it. And so I just, I was a little bit concerned about that. And then that made me not, well, because it made me doubt whether having, inviting someone to, to do this and not be able to interview them one on one, did we do a disservice in any way? That was, that's just what I'm thinking and just bringing that up for discussion.
Erica, we just had a chance to go once or twice. You want, anything else you want to add? Anybody else have?
Yeah, so, and just listening to the comments and looking over the material and for Patrick, I think my concern with Patrick is when I did some research on reading through his resume and all of that and looking at community involvement, he even mentioned about the time commitment and that he felt like he could handle it. But he didn't mention his, all of his community involvement, at least what I had found with he's also the chair of the Democratic, Washington County Democratic things, or I wonder parties, or how that which could have had the opportunity to ask him about that as far as how that commitment also weighs in on this.
Yeah, feels like that'd be a tough, we should keep doing that and like time, just time wise, right? Yeah, I don't prioritize your time, but that does feel like a tough left if we before to continue to try to vote. So, your understanding, Rose, we have not made sure everybody we all vote for who we think is the best person. If it's two, one, 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 does the person with two win or does it mean the majority?
Mean majority, and so
So then we will eliminate, well, if it's two, one, 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 I, okay, but yeah, it'll be two tied.
I'm, I'm just going up last time, and last time it worked out to the Yedira got all, all of the votes the first time. And so that's how it works. So I would say that he'll, you know, you can choose, but they probably won't, if someone gets a majority of the votes, if someone gets four votes, then that would be enough, and then we would
Okay.
But if not
If no one gets four votes, three and three, then we'll eliminate the two, re-discuss and vote again.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that feels right, yeah.
Are we required to vote for the nominee thing?
No.
We are in another situation.
No, I, I remember that. That's one I specifically, no, that's one I specifically remember from Yedira's process. I remember like, yeah. Just want to make sure everybody got nominated, but yeah, she don't vote for the person you know. Yeah. So if we don't have any more discussion, I think we're to the point where we at least take a first round of voting, right? Does everybody feel comfortable doing that? All right, Erica, you want to start? Downline out of the way.
Do I just have to say who we're voting for now?
Yes, the name of the person you would like to appoint or your first choice for appointment.
Oh, my first choice would be Patrick McGuire.
Okay, Monique, you want to go next?
Michael.
Lisa?
Patrick McGuire.
Sheen? Nancy?
Patrick.
And I'm also Patrick McGuire, so I guess we have to worry about various rounds then. So, got some candidates, vote. We've done it. So you'll let Patrick know that he's selected for the appointment, and then we'll swear him in downstairs. What's that? Right. Appreciate everybody's just the hard work we all did. It was not easy. I do think all four of them would make great organs, I hope they move on. We are early. We don't have anything else in the work session we need to do, right? I guess we would have had another person to talk to, and person, probably would take them off there. And hopefully we're not doing this again anytime soon, but maybe 20 minutes, we worried about 20 or 30 minutes, 20 minutes probably would have been
Twenty one minutes would have barked. For sure.
All right.
You took the pressure off, for sure.
It took the pressure off, for sure. It's fine for us to be done early. So then what's that?
I'm used to this feeling.
Well, we also start forward. All right, so unless somebody have anything else they want to add up here in the discussion?
Any thoughts about having the person who will be here? Well, I or, or, or let's make sure that in the future, if people can't be here, that we allow the same accommodation that we did for Michael.
Oh, yeah, and you gave Michael opportunity to video all of Xandar's as well, which I think if he would have had time or the ability, he might have made a difference.
Yeah.
It just wasn't possible.
Do a video to livestream in if it's possible, and that's, this is the option he chose.
Okay. And he's still I, I think he's a pretty good person because he'd be chosen for the C D F C, right, so. All right. We will adjourn the work session and meet downstairs in forty or so minutes. Let's start on time.
Sorry, in my day job, your notes would have to be compensated and shredded. Is that the same?
Yeah, determine the rule.
Okay.
Public record, you know, shred.
Don't think we have the same prescription. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atholati Indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County in the state of Oregon. We honor the Indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tu'alas and Kalapuya, the Kethlamet, Klakamis, Tomwater, Molalla, bands of the Chinook, and many other Indigenous nations of the Columbia River. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban Indigenous Native First Peoples communities living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations. Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. All right, we will begin today with a recognition as we often do. And Mike and I will go over there. How is it our microphone situation is over there?
All right, it is a, hear me okay, Catherine? Okay, it is a pleasure to have the opportunity to congratulate and thank our students for their participation as student reps for the 2021-22 school year. So thank you for all of the time that you've invested in our, not only in our community, but in our school district specifically. Oftentimes when we have students that apply for these positions, it seems like they're already the busiest people. And this does not help that cause. In fact, it adds to the burden, and I know that all three of you are definitely, you fit that description. Not only I've kept up with your activities and your athletics and all of the clubs you're involved with, but you attended meetings as well. The thing I think that I've appreciated the most is that you've not just sat as a bystander and observed what happened. You've had depth and insight and a perspective that we wouldn't have had unless you had been involved. And we talked about student voice and how important that is for student engagement and for students to feel like they're involved and they're represented, and they're represented. You have definitely provided us with that student voice. All three of you have a work ethic and your insights and experiences, the information that you've gathered to stay informed so you participate in a really strong advisory capacity. And we just appreciate all of the effort that's gone to everything that you've done. You've also, you've provided a conduit to students to make sure that they understand what's going on at the district level, and you have definitely brought that perspective back to the group. I feel like you are, you have been the perfect three folks to bridge the gap. Just to be that bridge between students and, and district. So we've all seen you in action. We know that you're incredibly well-prepared. You will change the status quo as you move forward from here and as you, as you move into your, your next several years. And you'll have a lot of fun doing it. You'll make a huge difference. So thank you for all that you've done and best wishes to you.
Because the school board recognizes the value of students' input on matters that are important to them, board members established a position of student representative to the board of directors, beginning with the 2018-19 school year. Last June, Seth Tronco from Glencoe High School, Kaylee Vazquez Burgos from Hillsborough High School, and Michelle Chan of Glencoe High School were appointed to serve as student representatives to the board of directors in Hillsborough School District. Throughout the year, Seth, Kaylee, and Michelle have invested countless hours studying board meeting materials and preparing to discuss agenda items, speaking to the interests of students, not only during board meetings, but by advocating to legislators for adequate and stable funding and representing the district at a variety of events. Seth, Kaylee, and Michelle have served as liaisons, maintaining open channels of communication between the board and students. Seth, Kaylee, and Michelle's term of service ends this month, and we take this opportunity to thank them sincerely for their dedication and valuable service and wish them success as they complete their high school education and move forward in their future endeavors. And it was so great to see you again. And on that note, we will also be appointing the new student representatives to the school board. Today, they are not with us, but we have video messages of them receiving their oath of office. I think we do the motion first. So would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the board of directors accept the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint V. Godoy from Century High School, Yvette Alonso Garcia from Liberty High School, and Kaylee McGuire from Hillsborough Online Academy to serve as student representatives to the board of directors during the 2022-2023 school year.
It's been moved by Director Kim and seconded by Director Allen that the board of directors accept the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint V. Godoy from Century High School, Yvette Alonso Garcia from Hillsborough High, no, from Liberty, and Kaylee McGuire from Hillsborough Online Academy to serve as student representatives of the board of directors for the 2022-23 school year. Turn the discussion. It was an honor to serve on the selection committee with y'all. It was great. Rose, can you do, we can just say what, call the roll. There you go.
Lisa Allen?
Aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. We don't have Erica? Okay. All right, are y'all ready?
I, V. Godoy, will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state I, V. Godoy, will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon and will discharge the
There you go.
I, V. Godoy, will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon and will discharge the duties of student representative to the Hillsborough School District's Board of Directors to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
All right.
Hello, my name is Yvette Alonso Garcia. I am an Uprising junior and at Liberty, and I am Latinx and a woman. I am here to present myself to be part of the board director, student rep. I, Yvette Alonso Garcia, will support the Constitution and the law of the United States and the state of Oregon and will discharge the duties of the student representative to the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors to the best of my
Hello, everyone. My name is Kaylee McGuire. I just finished my junior year. I was dual enrolled at HOA and Liberty High School. Then I'll finish off my senior year at Liberty High School. I, Kaylee McGuire, will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Oregon and will discharge the duties of student representative to the Hillsborough School District Board of directors to the best of my ability. Thank you.
All right, those are our new incoming student representatives, and we had a tremendous state of candidates, so we are very fortunate to have them. All right, our next agenda item is to appoint a new school board member to replace Director Martinez, who resigned. We had a great conversation and met the candidates upstairs. Really, four tremendous applicants. I think we all would have been honored to serve with any one of them. Patrick McGuire is here with us, and he was chosen. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to appoint Patrick McGuire to fill the vacant position number seven on the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors through the end of the term on June 30th, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Kim, Kim to appoint Patrick McGuire to fill the position seven on the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors through the end of the term on June 30th, 2023. Turn the discussion. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Lisa, aye.
Aye.
Or do you want your word?
opposed.
Do you have any comments?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Patrick, you are our new school board representative, and let's pull it here. All right.
Mark, do you make sure?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we can do that. I, Patrick McGuire, do solemnly affirm
I, Patrick McGuire, do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the state of Oregon
the Constitution of the state of Oregon
and the laws thereof
and the laws thereof
and the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J
and the policies of the Hillsborough School District 1J
during my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties
during my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties
of the office of school board member to the best of my ability
of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the board of directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been directed by, moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward that the board of directors approve the agenda as printed, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the motion carries, are there any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the board of directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Allen and seconded by Director Ward that the board of directors approve the consent agenda as printed, is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries. All right, we are two reports and discussions, and we begin. Oh, audience time, is that next? Oh, we'll write by, all right, we do have two, I think, today, is that right? Okay. All right, Jen, I have something I have to read first. You can go ahead and yeah, get right on top of it. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDTH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card, available at the top of the HSD homepage or at the table entrance of the school, of the boardroom, and submit it via the Google form, by email, or in person to the executive assistant of the board of directors, Rose Roman. Commenters should include their name and, if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Up to three minutes at the board's discretion will be allowed per comment. Commenters may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public session, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channel for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes shall be prohibited. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene and profane language, impatience, lack of respect for others, or personal attacks are not acceptable behavior. Demonstrations in support or oppositions of a speaker are not permitted. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the community input of members. Hello, welcome.
Hello, okay. Hi, everybody, my name is Jenna Walkenhorst, I'm an incoming senior at Century High School. I am a part of the National Honor Society, which focuses on leading and serving in the community, and I'm also a member of the girls varsity basketball team. Two years ago, the district implemented something in our class schedule called advisory. And its purpose was to support the social and emotional well-being of students and promote positive mental health. I really appreciate all the effort that has gone into helping myself and my peers. However, it's not working. My experience with advisory the past two years has been disappointing and what most would call frustrating. It's, instead of talking to each other as a group and opening up, it's been people staring at their phones and scrolling, or watching the movies that teachers have put on for them, or simply sitting there or skipping class and not even attending. And my people like myself have used this time for homework, but I've found that most students and teachers alike find it an inefficient use of our time. When I'm struggling emotionally, I go to trusted friends, family, other adults, counselors, and I know that most around me would agree that they do the same, not share with people that they were randomly put in a class with. So, just under three weeks ago, I started a petition to remove advisory from the school schedule. This, I would, my goal is to bring us back to the schedule we had prior to the pandemic with longer learning time per classes and a longer lunch where people could talk to friends that they would turn to in times of need. I think access is important, this time gives students time to go talk to their teachers for help with classes, and I think it's valuable to keep that or go back to having it every other Friday like we did a couple of years ago. For my petition, I went around to Century students during lunches, during advisory and access with permission from my teacher, and asked students to sign it, and many eagerly reached for the clipboard and pen. The people that I talked to that said they would not like to sign it were because of they liked the free time in the middle of the school day, or as one, I heard one young man put it, "Don't sign advisory petition, advisory is my skip time." The people, or, to get the petition out to Hill High, Glencoe, and Liberty, I enlisted friends from each of those schools and spread the word about it. In 20 days, I've gotten 627 signatures. 575 of those about have been from students from our district and about 50 or so from community members. And I know that if I had more time, I could get a lot more. Here are all the people that have signed the petition, there are 40 signatures per sheet. There are a lot of these sheets. So, speaking for all of these students who have signed the petition and community members, and even all the teachers who have jokingly asked me if they could sign the petition, because they, most of them see it as much of a waste of our learning time as we do, we ask you to remove advisory from the school schedule, please, and go back to the schedule we had previously before the pandemic. Thank you. There's a few more, but
Do we have any other audience participation? Okay. All right, sorry for doing that out of order. All right, reports and discussions. I see our HSF friends here. Yeah. Do you want to lead us off?
Thank you, everyone, again. Spitz here. I'm Erin Carlson, I'm the executive director for the Hillsborough Schools Foundation. I'm joined tonight by some of our board members, outgoing President Nathan Sosa, outgoing Secretary Navy Zimmerland, they're both still staying on the board, and Jackie Spross, who is incoming on our executive team as well this year, and a former school board member. Others wish that they could be here tonight, but we send them our best and we will try to do our best to cover for them. So, I wanted to thank our board first of all and talk about why we're here tonight. The School Foundation, we raise money for innovative programs in our schools, ones that teachers want, that we know that they will do in their schools. We work on fundraising with grants and foundations through corporate gifts and sponsorships. We do events like our golf tournament, which is coming up in September at McKay Creek, just a little nine-holer. And I hope Superintendent Scott, you'll come out and join us again, not playing, but
Better for
It's a pretty small, narrow course, anyway. We also have our gala, which is our big fun event that is coming up the last Saturday of February. We already have a theme. Making educational, making education transformative, the Met Gala of Hillsborough. Brooke, you have your marching orders. The queen of costumes, all right. So, we're, we're really hoping that we can do that one in person, we've had them on virtually the last two years, and we've been pretty successful, but the air kind of goes out of the balloon when you can't do that networking and that sense of community for fundraising for such an important cause. So, we how we give, the beginnings of the School Foundation were set on innovative grants to make sure that teachers had extra funds to do the things that were not covered in government budget dollars. So, our innovative grants, they're submitted by educators in the spring, and a community committee picks through those. And we've given between $40,000 and $90,000 a year in those grants. They go up to $7,500, and there was an attachment in your board pocket that had a list of those that were awarded grants for the coming school year. We also have provided $15,000 a year for at least the last 10 years for middle school homework clubs in our four large middle schools. And those are for students that are identified as needing a boost up to grade level. And they're identified by their parents and the staff, and it's free to them. They go two times a week, and even if they don't have homework, they still have to go, and they might do tech to learn or read a book, but they are still working on bettering their education. And that's been a really big, important thing for us to continue to do. We also do one-time grant facilitation, like the Hill High Automotive Program has a big fan at the Oregon Community Foundation, and I repeatedly get contacted from them saying, "We've got money, what can we do?" And that's all based off of a newspaper article that ran about the automotive program many years ago. We also, when folks call up and say, "I've got stuff that I want to donate," we facilitate that as well. And there's kind of an ongoing donor for the special programs at Irinko Elementary. This year, we had the benefit of the Segal Foundation, which wanted to make sure that our teachers, our schools, and our school communities, including the parents, knew how to write grants and how to do GoFundMe pages for their classrooms and give them the skills to do that and to take a look at what their whole school community needed in the future. And we worked with the Segal Foundation and secured a $100,000 grant. We hired an encore fellow, which is a retiree that has great knowledge, and it's a program through Social Venture Partners. We hired that person to go to 10 schools that had not been typically applying or receiving grants from the foundation. The pandemic really made it a challenge between getting that encore fellow, Dr. Bruce Smith, into those buildings, talking to the parents, talking to the teachers and the principal. But we ended up doing okay. In your packet are the listing of the 10 schools and a $7,000 grant from the Segal Foundation for each of those schools for the projects that are listed in that, in that packet. I think Lead Acres is the only one that did three projects for their 7,000 total. And on top of that, going to our next big thing, they also helped us with one, with one more part. The, our big initiative. I want to say thank you to Brooke and Amanda and the rest of the team that has worked really hard on getting our initiative going. Several years ago, probably 10, my board president at the time and Mike Scott and I drove up to Bellevue and Issaquod. We met with those foundations and superintendents and said, "How did you go from raising $300,000 a year to a million dollars? And we want to get there too." And granted, they have a higher, better socioeconomic, but we knew we could do this. So, we came back with all kinds of ideas, including the big one is a big initiative, something that hits every student in a bubble. So, first, we did the STEM kits for the kindergarten through sixth grade. I've lost the name in my head of what those were called. And then we did, we brought SHOT back in the career labs that are in all four of the middle schools. And that was a $600,000 initiative that we raised those funds for, it took us about three years to do. And now, we are doing the kindergarten through sixth grade career kits. So, 14 different careers, two per grade level, and on top of that, books. We worked with one of those teachers that applied for grants at Lead Acres and also worked with Vanessa from the TOSA for libraries for the district, put together a massive list of bicultural and bilingual books. And we have already contributed $100,000 just a few weeks ago for those books to go in every library in the district, in every elementary school library in the district. And they're also, those career kits will have those books too. So, they're written by, they're about kids that look like me and non-traditional careers as well. So, girls can be airline pilots and construction managers, and boys can be kindergarten teachers and nurses. So, we're really excited about that. So, in just this last, it really was a successful hit. We also worked with state representative at the time, Janine Solomon, Susan McLean, and Senator Chuck Riley, and we received $200,000 from the state federal funds because this was about getting kids educated enough to fill the jobs in our workforce. So, we did the presentation for them and the reporting, and I'm glad to say that we brought in the last check of that money so I can finish up those reports that I have to do for the next five years. So, we're really excited about that. But one of the big things that I wanted to share with you tonight, and I don't know if we can do a photo of the board and our board and your board that's here, that I brought, how much we have given just in this calendar year. We're almost up to $5 million since 2000 in giving back to school district programs, so so for how you can help, we're always looking for board members and volunteers. As a matter of fact, I was going to follow up with the board, the people that applied for the board tonight, they'll find me on their LinkedIn folder. And then, we also need help in spending time at our HSF booths at a couple of Saturday markets and Tuesday markets, donating items, time, and attend the auction in February. And you can also donate a car, an RV, a house, we're open for anything. So, again, thank you very much to the staff, and I am just, I have really put Amanda and Brooke through the wringer. They, I told them that I had $200,000 that I had to spend, and so they gave me they gave me a list of, I think it was $27,000. And so, while they talked, I just held this up on our Zoom call. That was a very special time for all of us, because every time they suggested something, I just minus it, knowing to tell them and push them that, yes, we have work to do, and they did it. I don't know if Amanda has slept in the last month, but they did it. And we've got those more career kits that we've got teams of people that are ready to volunteer and put those together so we can get them out into the classrooms and get them started. So, we thought we would have a couple of years to put it together, and we've already, just as of last week, we've already given $300,000.
I would just like to say thank you so much, Hillsborough School Foundation. It's just such an amazing investment in our students and I'm going to believe they're being much more college-ready, and that's so exciting. I am so excited for them to see themselves in those variety early on and let themselves dream out of it. And I just know I speak for every educator licensed and classified and our future students that get to that. So, thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you so much. So, I get to be a director of teaching in a new elementary in the emails as they're going out into the schools with a list of books, and the replies have been amazing, the people have just been so grateful and thankful for all.
Say, we know that the Hillsborough Schools Foundation is felt throughout our community and the connection between the love of the community that each of you radiate and the love that you have for our students really is demonstrated.
and the love that you have for our students really is demonstrated and shown year after year for projects and relationships and that connection of an excitement for elementary kids and the variety of careers within our community. So thank you so much for every, everything, all of your help, all of your time, energy and effort. It is a lot. So thank you so much.
The funds, all the things that I've written checks for this year and our fiscal year, which is all for a bunch of yours. We have, this whole foundation will have donated five hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars this year.
Wow.
Before we take the picture, I just don't ever want to miss an opportunity to brag on Hillsborough Schools Foundation either. And I do have a 2011 Prius you might be interested in. That's probably two hundred bucks right there. That was you and that. But Hillsborough Schools Foundation is one of those partners for us that they want nothing more than to provide resources and opportunities for our students. They never come with an ask. They always come with a gift and an idea about how they can best benefit our students. And as I just take a look at the board members that are out there with Nathan, Nadine and Jackie, I know how hard you work and it's a small but very mighty group that pulls this off for our kids. We often refer to Erin as not the executive director, but the executive doer. And she, she coined that a couple of years back and I think that is still very true and relevant. And the great thing about Hillsborough Schools Foundation is they provide experience and opportunities for kids that they wouldn't otherwise have. And I think because of that, they've impacted thousands and thousands of students over the years. And I think a couple of years ago, one of the things that was so impressive is as the needs of our students changed so dramatically and we had, as the pandemic kicked in and we had families with, with family members being laid off and losing their jobs, they immediately pivoted and they started addressing the immediate needs of students. And when you have an organization that is that big and yet that nimble to react to the needs of our students, it just makes such a huge difference for our, for our kids. The other thing we appreciate so much is they deliberately work to align with the work that's happening in the district so that the dollars can be magnified and greater things can happen for our students. So whether it's STEM kits or the career labs or the K6 career kits, we just appreciate everything that you've done for our students and all of the people that are involved. So thanks to all of you.
Anybody else want to add anything before we take a picture?
I would, I would like to say that if this isn't best practice of philanthropy, I don't know what it is. This is where the rubber hits the road. This is what most people talk about and you guys are doing it. I have never, in all of the places that I have lived in the United States, I have never seen this level of giving by the community in and of itself. That is impressive. It is awesome. It is to be inspired, it is to be duplicated and sign me up for a Saturday in a booth. Thank you.
And I, Erin knows this already, but I was a big fan lover of the Hillsborough Schools Foundation way before I was on the school board. And it just, serving on the board, getting to know the group even better, probably doing fewer things because of time, but you know, you get it. I just could not love the foundation anymore. I will be there at the golf tournament. And, and the, and it, the sort of hidden gem is for all the board members and Patrick, welcome. The, in the spring, the surprise patrol gets, goes on onsite and brings the notification to teachers that they won, comes into their classrooms, coordinated with them. It is one of the most rewarding experiences you can have. Yeah, you probably tear up a little bit. So I think I only got to go on one this year, but it was, it's always amazing. So if you, if you have an opportunity to, we all have busy schedules, but if you get an opportunity on the surprise patrol, I highly recommend it. All right, let's take a picture, right?
A next report and discussions about the K6 materials adoption. Travis, Becky, I see Becky online or somebody who's staying around.
I'm going to kick to Becky once we get the slideshow. But I did want to say before we get started, thank you to Becky Kingsmith, Arsema Tovar and Jeremy Carter for all the work that they've put into this process. This has been an unusual process and we've moved forward quickly with a recommendation for our health adoption. Tonight you'll see the report and we hope that you approve the proposal at the retreat on August 2nd. So we're happy to answer questions after it's over or we have some time before then.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there in person today. I actually had a vacation day today, so. But I did want to join this evening to do our final presentation on our recommendation. Just to give, lay the groundwork for being here this evening. We, as a public school district in the state of Oregon, follow the Oregon Department of Education materials adoption cycle. So about every seven years, ODE does a cycle of adoption for different subject areas and curriculum. We unfortunately have been out of compliance when it comes to health materials. I think it's probably been about fifteen or twenty years since we have formally adopted health materials at the K through twelve level. And so every year when Travis does his Division 22 compliance report to the school board and to bits to ODE, we've had to mark for the last few years that we are out of compliance when it comes to our health materials adoption. This year, especially when we've returned back to in-person learning, it became very obvious that adopting health materials was going to be an urgent need for, for our schools, K through twelve. It became obvious that our students needed some preventative and responsive education when it came to physical, mental, social and emotional health. And so with that, we started the process with the help of some of the people you're going to hear speak tonight. Started a very quick, this is probably the quickest adoption cycle we've been through, but we did do all of the parts that we're supposed to. We got a pilot in, we, and we're going to hear all the feedback of that this evening to be able to come to you this evening with a recommendation so that we are in compliance and meet this urgent need of our students when it comes to K6 health instructional materials. So I will kick it to the next slide. We're going to have each person introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Arsema Tovar and I'm Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
And I am Erin Hanson. I was the counselor at Arancow. I am now the Health TOSA for the district.
And I'm Jeremy Carter and I do socio-emotional learning at recess and I'll be around at some capacity next year.
Thank you. If you could go to the next slide, please. So when we did the language arts adoption, our journey took two slides. But as you can see, this was really quick, just like how Becky stated. So we did start back in March and we were able to survey the whole elementary staff to get feedback on standards and what they needed in terms of curriculum. And we also identified visioning and guiding principles to be able to guide us through that adoption process. And in April, we started looking at different curriculum and we put together a review team that started reviewing the curriculum and really looking at whether or not it fit the needs that we had in terms of standards and that they followed our guiding principles. And we started piloting, identifying pilot, pilot, teachers to pilot the curriculum. So we piloted those in April. And as you can see, we're here now in June and we're coming forward with a recommendation from our adoption team. Next, please.
So this is a picture. Earlier last month, we, actually we held, in this room, we held curriculum review opportunity for our CCAC. And so, but you get here, it's a picture of that. We had a couple of members come out and they were able to take that feedback and bring it back to the CCAC. And we'll, we'll get into that a little bit at the end. So when we went into this, one of the, one of our focuses was really casting a wide net, right? We wanted to not just adopt, you know, what the district over, the, the next district over was, was doing. And so we really, Erin and I and some, a team of people really took a lot of submissions. We ended up with about six or seven curriculum that we were going to look at. And that was really K8. But as we really started to look at it and whether they had the capacity and the ability to kind of really meet what we needed, we, we limited it down to these three curriculums. We had Health Smart by ETR, The Great Body Shop and the Michigan Model for Health. The first step we did is we created a review process. It was a worksheet based on the ODE accreditation process. The ODE, I'm sure many of you know, they kind of, they have approved list of curriculum that we, that, that we could choose from. We wanted to make sure that we were looking beyond that just in case something had changed. They hadn't updated that since I believe 2017. And so we, we had a consolidated version of that in which we, our review teams used to kind of analyze the curriculum. And so these are the results. What it showed us was that Health Smart and The Great Body Shop really kind of separated themselves at that point. They exceeded or adhered to the, the criteria the most. And so from that point, we were able to take that and really move on to our pilot process. Erin really helped with the pilot, the classroom pilot, so.
So this is some data around the pilot. We had quite a few teachers that were able to look at The Great Body Shop, The Health Smart. And then at this point, we kind of knew that the Michigan model would probably be used more for supplemental. So we didn't have as many teachers looking at that one. And so we, we had them do just one unit, which was four lessons between that two-week period. And then Carter had created this great document for them to give feedback on each of the lessons as they went through it, asking some questions and whether they felt like they would recommend this curriculum. And, and you could see there's quite a few teachers. I think even, there was actually a few more Arancow teachers. So I think on the next slide, it might show that we did the, where we had the CCAC come to Arancow and be able to watch some of the lessons in person. We had six teachers at Arancow doing some of the lessons. Yeah, so this is in class at Arancow where they got to walk around and be able to see the lessons in action. And what I heard mostly was just seeing a lot of great teaching. You know, you put a curriculum in front of them, in front of the great teachers and they're going to make everything, they're going to make it great. So, and I think, and maybe the next slide, there was some feedback, not yet. Okay, there's going to be a little bit of feedback from the CCAC on what they thought.
Perfect. And so one of the things we really wanted to look at is this kind of, were we capturing, you know, what we needed to capture with this pilot? And so overall, we ended up piloting at eight schools with fifteen teachers and we were able to reach three hundred and seven students. There's some demographic information at the bottom in that, in that text. And we were pretty pleased that it was able to represent our student body pretty well. And we were able to really, we were, we were able to reach the populations that we wanted to. We, we had seven teachers that each piloted The Great Body Shop and seven more that piloted The Health Smart. And the two additional teachers piloted the Michigan Model because they had a really strong socio-emotional learning. The CASL certified and we wanted to look at that into the future as we kind of look ahead to maybe some of these other standards that we're going to be, need to be meeting. So as we really broke down the data, in the very beginning of this, we had sent out a survey asking our educators what that, what they would be looking at for in, in, in health curriculum. They identified six indicators. They wanted curriculum that was engaging and relevant, developmentally appropriate. They wanted it to be plug and play, have ready-made materials, have a digital platform and be culturally responsive. And so when, when our, when our pilators did each of these lessons, they evaluated each lesson individually on whether it met those six criteria. As you can see here, it was, it was pretty close, right? That we were looking, did it meet it? Did it not meet it or were they undecided, right? So the green is it met, it met all six, it met this, that indicator. The, the red is that, the not, and the, the yellow was that it was undecided, right? So we captured all that data, we brought it all together and we were able to kind of get a, like a overview of how our, how our pilators felt about these programs. We then took that information directly to the pilators and had a little summit where they were able to break out and really discuss this. Up until this point, The Great Body Shop and Health Smart really were very close to each other as far as the data. So we wanted to get that other, that qualitative feedback, have a discussion around it. Where are we going to, you know, how were we going to figure out which one of these to adopt? One of the other things that we had asked is that I had looked at each of the individual indicators or then the, the instructional models that they were going for. And they, we wanted to know if it increased the stated student knowledge and skills and the stated performance objectives, right? So once again, very close. Great Body Shop and Health Smart still were in that eighty-four to eighty-six percentile. So that was also some of the data that we brought to that summit. So at the summit, we actually had them make a recommendation, right? And so after hearing from each other and, and having breakout groups and coming back together and sharing, seventy percent of the educators recommended The Great Body Shop for adoption. They found that The Great Body Shop had engaging materials. It was interesting and relevant. It handled the tough topics with age-appropriate examples and lessons and it handled relevant topics like divorce with a student-focused perspective. One of the, some of the weaknesses in some ways could be a con, right? So I mean, it could be a positive. There was a lot of material with The Great Body Shop. And so I think that our educators, especially with the capacity that they had this year, had a hard time maybe breaking that out and, and doing it. But with more practice and more time, I think that they would have been able to use that in other curriculum areas. So yeah, they found that there was a lot of materials, which can also be a positive thing. So that's kind of where we got. And then I think Erin's going to take us into next steps if we were to adopt The Great Body Shop. Oh, perfect. Hey, so this, in the CCAC, we did not actually include this slide. So, so the recommended instructional packets, so working with The Great Body Shop to see what that would look like. So we would be looking at a seven-year subscription. This, these numbers are kind of based off of the, our attendance this year, actually. So I believe that all of you, well, at least the board members, you have a package that had our, an executive summary. Perfect. And so in that executive summary, you'll see some of these other figures that the cost associated with it. The good news is that there's no supplemental materials that are needed and that there's a professional development included with, with The Great Body Shop. And we're actually hoping that we can actually negotiate a couple more days of instructor development as we kind of slow roll this into our adoption and getting it into our classrooms.
All right, so some of the summer work that would happen if we choose to do this, if we choose to go with The Great Body Shop, is to pull together an elementary work group. And I already have a list. And I already have a list of teachers that are interested in doing this work in the summer, essentially just getting the lessons and the units ready for teachers in the fall. So we're not just giving them a website link and say, go at it. There's a lot of things that they are given. We want to give them some structure to make it a little bit easier. So working on that scope and sequence, creating some slides to make the lessons more user-friendly because there isn't, there's not Google Slides or PowerPoints that come with The Great Body Shop. And so, and then preparing the lessons for the teachers. And then just collaborating with the district's TOSSAs. There is another health TOSA in the district that I'll be working with. And then our, collaborating with the social emotional TOSA. Collaborating with the publisher, so I'll be having lots of conversations with the publisher about just what they could provide when it comes to professional development. So we know that we can get one day, but one day when we have such a huge district is, sounds like not very much. So I'd like to try to negotiate a little bit more. And then preparing and scheduling professional development for the fall. So like just doing some of that preliminary work. And then there's a little bit more info on the next slide. So they're throughout the year, regardless of whether we choose The Great Body Shop or another health curriculum, but hopefully we'll choose The Great Body Shop. I will be helping coordinate some synchronous and asynchronous professional development throughout the year. We just want to provide different opportunities for teachers to be able to participate in that. And then implementing, and we're hoping to implement in October. There's a lot of things that come out like in the, in September. So we're not telling them that they have to start like immediately. And then aligning that with the social emotional learning goals that we have as a district. We'll focus on, so there's three standards on the report card. So we're going to match those with the units in The Great Body Shop and really focus on those three units for this school year with the potential of adding more in the future. And then of course, making sure that we have scaffolds in there for diverse student needs, which The Great Body Shop addresses that really well anyway. But making sure, you know, we know our district better, we can't just rely on the curriculum to do that for us. And then I'll be providing monthly drop-in support, office hours for people to come in and check in and make sure that they're feeling comfortable with the material. And I'm sure as I get into this position, many more things I'll add to this.
So Linda Osuna is the co-chair and she, the CCAC, and she couldn't be here. She had a conflict come up tonight and she said that these messages were approved by her for delivery by me to you. So the feedback from the CCAC who understands from the study team what the proposal is and has a chance to review the materials, their conversations are highlighted here in the bullets. So they felt that The Great Body Shop was most graphically represented our students' diversity. Although it was cartoons, they felt like with the drawings, there was an opportunity to be more representative of the different types of kids we have in our community. And kids can see themselves in the, in the curriculum. They had a better website for students and families to extend learning. They had take-home materials for families in order to continue conversations at home. The kids will have the physical pamphlets to guide them. When we saw it, it was all digitally delivered. But when we adopt, we'll purchase hands-on materials for each student in the class. So they felt like it was going to be a better student experience once we actually buy the stuff. There's a potential need to add some supplemental materials to meet the needs of our communities. One example was the Crown Act and the teaching students not to touch other kids' hair. And so that's something that's important in Hillsborough that we teach our students. And that should be added to the, as a supplement to the content of this health education curriculum. There was a 10-0 vote in favor of moving this proposal forward to the school board from the CCAC, which is how they end their part of the process. So that's why we're here tonight with this proposal and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Of course you're right. Just go for it. You get me.
So I saw the comments and then the, the last bullet on there. I love the idea that you're thinking about diversity and that the graphics made it easier to deal with a more diverse population. But there were still comments that said that they found that there wasn't equitable representation among all communities. So are we asking for that? And then, and I'm kind of dovetailing that into the idea about the touching of the hair and the Crown Act. That's really important right now in a lot of places and a lot of spaces, not just in the school. So although we need it, can we get it from that manufacturer or how are we going to supplement that?
I hear the comment that we didn't see specific populations represented.
It was, it was like on page 44 of your PowerPoint.
So I believe that that comment came from earlier in the process, right? Where they were more, they were less familiar with it. I wanted to include it and kind of tell that whole story, right? Here the concern we had earlier, here's kind of as we got through it, the CCAC and definitely our pilators actually, they got more familiar with it, felt like maybe it wasn't as much of a concern, at least relative, right, to the other curriculum. And that's always the hard part. Obviously, we're, we're always going to compare, we're comparing and contrasting, right? And so it was a better, we found better representation in The Great Body Shop than in the other curriculum. So that's kind of how we settled.
Thank you.
We also, as we begin to implement, we also add venues where teachers give feedback on things that we probably, the curriculum doesn't cover because we have not yet found the perfect curriculum that is going to give us everything, right? So we always have to have our teachers give us feedback in order for us to be able to serve our own community. And so that process happens as we begin the implementation so that we can start thinking about how to supplement those missing pieces.
Like the Crown Act.
Other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Patrick. You look like you want to ask, no?
Well, I was just going to say that I'm in the unique position of having voted to approve this. A CCAC member can vote, approve it again tonight as a new school.
We won't be approving tonight. This is the first reading will prove it. If we approve it, it will be approved the next meeting. But gotcha, I see where you're going. Any other questions?
One clarifying question. Is this one, is this curriculum on the list of ODE-approved curriculums?
Before we go forward, I do want to say thank you. That's a lot of work. Thank you for the empirical data, everything that goes with that. It's imperative that we, just thank you. So thank you.
Good.
We're also going to have an open house, another open house opportunity for the community. So on July 7th, from 11:30 to 1:30, and we'll send the information to you through Kathy Wilson or Rose for you to come in if you would like to look at the curriculum more closely. We just need to have, it's all electronics. We have to have the licenses on our computers, but it'll be open for you to come and check it out for yourself.
So thank you guys for your presentation. It's a, go ahead. Oh, you got something else to add? Okay, good. Okay. Thank you for your presentation, your time. It's a little out of the ordinary, but not completely out of the ordinary. We had a community member sign up for audience, you guys can go ahead, be done. Set up for audience time and it was about this topic and didn't make it in time, but I feel like we can accommodate. I think I'll read the thing again. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent-to-speak card, available at the top of the HSD homepage or at the table at the entrance to the boardroom, and submit it via the Google form by email or in person to the executive assistant of the Board of Directors, Rose Ramon. Commenters should include their name and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Up to three minutes at the board's discretion will be allowed per comment. Commenters may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. Comments aimed at state and federally protected classes shall be prohibited. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene and profane language, impatience, lack of respect for others, and personal attacks are not acceptable behavior. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of the community members. George, I believe you fill out an intent-to-speak card, but we're not here, so you have three minutes.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate the flexibility. So thanks for entrusting me with an appointment to the CCAC. Today I wanted to add a comment to my vote for recommending The Great Body Shop. The Great Body Shop is full of positives for me. It's engaging, it comes with neat booklets that I think students will enjoy. Based on the data, the panel, you know, the panel teachers, you saw it, it got high scores on the rubric. Based on my review of the material, it looked age-appropriate and taught important lessons. I liked it better than the other two choices. We talked about this adoption in about three of our regular meetings. We also had two scheduled opportunities to actually view the material and one opportunity to see the teachers and the pilot. I was in, I went, I took advantage of both of these and I was impressed with it. I spent the whole hour reviewing the material, looking it over. And I also caught the last half of the pilot. And we have great teachers and they did great, great work on the pilot, I thought. I was, I was happy with what they did. But you know, not all, not, not many of us were able to make it to these events. But I will say for the three that were there, we had different things we were looking for and that's, that's good. And we got all kinds of different angles on it. Some were looking at diverse representation in illustrations or teaching styles. Does a teacher present more or is it more teaching, students discussing? These are all things we talked about. In my case, I care about those, but I'm more concerned about whether the material respects my family's values and if it's age-appropriate and if teachers, you know, teaches facts that we can all agree on. And I wasn't disappointed. So like I said, it didn't disappoint any of us. And the four of us who saw the material and the rest of the committee all voted to recommend it. And the vote speaks for itself. So why am I here? You remember, I wanted to, I just want to say that how you get there matters. That's my main point. You remember, I voted against recommending the CSC back in 2019 and I told you why in September. You heard many parents in October and we wanted you to delay the vote legally and consider more options for feedback. You voted against that, you know, parents who had taken dozens and dozens of hours to review the material. I wanted to clarify my vote because these two things are kind of entwined a bit, sex and health. They're both touchy subjects for parents, right? So a few points here. One, I voted for The Great Body Shop for health. And two, my vote against what we adopted in 2019 still stands. Our CSC teaches concepts too young. It defines abstinence but promotes promiscuity and experimentation without emphasizing the risks enough, in my opinion. The opt-out was number two. The opt-out was always a fail-safe, which is good, but the opt-out is broken. I don't know if you've heard this, but when I say broken, I mean, it's not always respected. It's, it's difficult to implement because there's, there's so much involved, right? It's a lot of bookkeeping and there wasn't accountability and I've seen it fail numbers of times. I keep hearing about, I heard about it just last month, about it failing. When parents don't trust the opt-out, they pull their kids out. Some of them do when they can. And I've heard of, I've heard that the board.
Sorry.
Can I keep going a little longer? Thank you. We talked about othering. This feels like othering to me, right? We need to care about all the people and why they're leaving. And number three, the adoption process, let the CCAC view the three options before the selection, but they can only vote on whether to recommend the district's choice. It didn't allow parents outside the CCAC to see it until the open house. I think we could benefit from having more input related in the process. We lucked out this time. I think, you know, the entire committee was behind it. That's not how CSC was and that's great, but how we get there matters. Finally, this is, this is probably going to be news to you. This might, I don't know, maybe you remember this, maybe you don't. But I want to bring to your attention an interesting fact. The parents who were, who asked you to delay your vote in 2019, their favorite choice for CSC was The Great Body Shop. So I just want to point out and consider, help you consider the opportunity you had to connect there with people who think differently. And you really could have reached consensus, it was within a stone's throw. So with that, I just hope you'll consider, I realize we're out of cycle, but if you could consider using The Great Body Shop for CSC for parts of it, just think about that, you know, it's, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Want to slide that microphone down to Michelle? Financial, oh.
Chair Watson, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, directors, again for allowing me to continue to submit my monthly financial report to give an update on what's going on in our business office and those functions. I ran out of space on the paper, but I just wanted to give a special shout out to the payroll staff and human resources who, in a very challenging time of the year, went ahead and were able to successfully implement a mid-year CBA and retroactive pay for a large percentage of our staff members. So very special thank you there. And maybe another note about summer programs. We've been gifted by the legislature again this year, a significant amount of money for summer programs. And with partnership of the instructional leaders and at the, both the district level and the buildings, we are going to be, have some very robust programs that are well-supported by facilities, transportation, nutrition services, technology, the whole school community is coming together to make sure that our kids have some great opportunities this summer. So those are things that could quite fit in here. But I, again, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about our activities and our cash flows through the end of May.
Any questions for Michelle? We have the report in our packet.
I just want to confirm, Michelle, that all of the pays have been retro based on the newly-agreed collective bargaining agreement?
Yes, we have one final payroll to do next week, which will include some supplemental pays that we couldn't address in the course of the work so far, but we'll make sure and get those out the door this, this year.
Okay, so I apologize. I should have said that, what does that mean, you have one payroll left?
Yeah, in June, we process four payrolls. Three of them are for our 10-month employees. So we make sure that they have, they've, they've earned their wages and that they've had their benefits covered for the month of July, August, and September. So when they come back, they'll have their first paycheck will cover their benefits seamlessly. So that's our practice. And then of course, we have our 12-month employees that have a payroll, a regular payroll as well.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, as always, Michelle, if you want to roll right into your next one.
Why, yes, I do. We are announcing our budget committee vacancies. We had one that was standing and we've decided to go ahead and roll that forward through, I want to say, applications will be accepted through November 1st-ish. So we have four positions that are, will be open effective June 30th this month.
Thank you. Travis also has some openings to announce, I believe.
14 spots. There's seven openings, I mean, it's seven people who are diverse and representative. So be advertising please to your friends and colleagues over the summer. Can I talk louder? In August, we'll have the deadline for applications, so it's available on our website.
And does the seven include Patrick vacating his spot?
Patrick, are you up for reappointment this year?
I believe I was, but I have to go check. Probably does include, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Travis? Just want to reiterate what I said upstairs, that the curriculum advisory committee is a great way to understand the workings of the district. We had four tremendous applicants, three of which, for the vacancy in the school board, three of which had served on the curriculum advisory committee. And it was that they were really, repeat what I said upstairs. I think they are probably more prepared and understand what a school board member does than I did when I ran. So, you know, it's a great way to learn about the district. All right, next item is adjust appropriations with Michelle.
Thanks again, Chair Watson. This time every year, we take the opportunity to evaluate our spending against what we set our appropriations for when we start off based on the adoption of the budget. So this is all about the current year budget. You can see that we had some funds set aside. You can see that we had some funds set aside in contingency in both the general fund and the capital projects fund that for the reasons listed here have been appropriated for use. And so bringing it forward here to the board is a requirement of local budget law for transparency and reporting.
Any questions? Situation page is 53 in your packet. That'd be awesome.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the adjusted appropriations for special revenue funded as listed.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors approve the adjusted appropriations for special revenue funds as listed. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to let folks know that I'm going to abstain on some items tonight because I haven't had the chance to do due diligence on all of it. But it's not a reflection of lack of confidence on the good work.
Thank you. Rose can call the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Now we get to the uncomfortable part. I'd share Mike. There you go.
It's not uncomfortable.
So every year, the Board of Directors conducts an evaluation of the superintendent's performance. And do we, do we read the letter before or after the motion? Does it matter? Okay. As a, Mike, of course, we know you're the best superintendent in the state and hopefully the letter that we sent to makes that expressly clear from all of us. So Mike gets to sit here and listen while I read the letter that is now in his personnel file. All right. Dear Superintendent Scott, the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors has completed your evaluation for the 2021-22 school year. According to policy G B C, sorry, according to policy C B G evaluation of the superintendent. This year's standards-based model included a pre-evaluation survey completed by individual board members, your self-evaluation that examines your leadership and operational performance, and a thorough board discussion guided by an independent consultant. Thank you for your continued exceptional service to the HSD community in this your 13th year as superintendent. As established, you were evaluated on nine standards for superintendent performance. Number one, leadership and culture. Number two, policy and governance. Number three, communication and community relations. Number four, organizational management. Number five, facilities and technology management and planning. Number six, instructional leadership. Number seven, human resources management. Number eight, values and ethics of leadership. And number nine, equity and cultural responsiveness. The board used a four-point scoring system with exceeding proficient, developing, and does not meet as descriptors. Superintendent Scott, the Board of Directors values your commitment to our community and district and your leadership towards our continuous improvement. Again, this year, the data from your evaluation showed an exemplary overall performance. In all eight standards, the average rating from the board was between proficient and exceeding. We should also note that two board members have yet to complete their first year of service and as such provided an N A or non-numerical rating in several categories. We are proud to have you as our superintendent. Here are selected highlights from each of the nine standards. Standard one, leadership and district culture. The board assessed a score of 3.71. Director comments focused on your exemplary leadership during the ever-changing situation created by the COVID-19 pandemic. Also noted is your commitment to communication with staff, students, families, and the overall community. Several directors made note of the important role you have played in the elevation of the voices of our parent advisory committees. Number two, policy and governance. The board assessed a score of 3.86. Directors noted the work at the district and state level to increase health services opportunities for students and the work you did leading the district through the hybridization of our board meetings. One note is a continued request for feedback to the board on the implementation and impact of board policies, something we should consider adding to the agenda for the full day retreat. Standard three, communications and community relations. The board assessed a score of 3.86 with one director noting that you are a role model of how to create effective community relationships and strategic partnerships for our district. Directors were very complimentary regarding your communications team and the focus and the focus of clear, consistent communications throughout the district during the pandemic. Standard four, organizational management. The board assessed a score of 3.86 with the rest, directors noting the mastery you have over the district's organizational management. Several directors noted the exceptional financial team you've assembled. Additionally, directors noted the professional growth opportunities you provide for the staff and completion of new school resource officer agreements. Standard five, facility and technology management and planning. The board assessed a score of 3.86 with directors noting the acceleration of the one-to-one student device rollout. Directors are also very appreciative of the technological enhancements in the boardroom that allow for directors and members of our community to easily participate in board meetings. Also of note is the exemplary leadership as the work of the capital's construction bond nears completion. Standard six, instructional leadership. The board assessed a score of 3.71 with several directors noting the depth and breadth of the career and college pathways option, options available to HSD students. In addition, directors are excited to see the improvements in the new pathway center at the Oak Street campus will provide. It is our, it is important to directors to see the district continue to improve on using student data to drive our investment decisions. Also mentioned is the national attention HSD summer programs received with the visit from the U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona. Number seven, standard, human resources management. The board assessed a score of 3.71 with directors praising the work you and your staff have done to ensure HSD has the best educators. Many directors noted the important addition of a bilingual stipend to improve the ability of our students and families to communicate more effectively with their school and district. Directors also noted the continuation of the Grow Your Own program with our partners. Additionally, the importance of having in-person instruction to every student every day was seen in the all-hands-on-deck approach you implemented during pandemic recovery. Standard eight, values and ethics of leadership. The board assessed a score of 3.86 with one director noting that this has historically been Mike's strongest area in the assessment and this year is no different. In this, the most challenging of all school years, directors know that you will always keep students at the forefront of district decisions. Standard nine, equity and cultural responsiveness. In this, our newest standard, the board assessed a score of 3.5. This relatively new standard for superintendent valuation is clearly a priority for you and the board recognizes and appreciates your focus and the strides made in these key standards. Many directors noted their appreciation for the creation of a cabinet-level position and the hiring of the Equity Access and Engagement Officer. Directors again applauded the elevation of voices in our packs and the creation of a bilingual stipend. We know you will continue to work towards building a staff that is truly reflective of our community. We encourage you to continue to use student data points to connect the allocation of our resources to improve disparities in the educational outcomes of our students. Superintendent Scott, your performance in each of the above nine standards has been outstanding this year. You lead a skilled, caring, and dedicated staff who are committed to supporting each student's academic and personal growth in safe and inclusive environments. You sustain strong community partnerships that allow us to provide unique opportunities to our students as they move through our system and prepare for life after high school. We are proud to serve our community as board members and honored to work with you towards a shared vision of providing a world-class, outstanding public education to every student in the district, which prepares them for whatever path they choose to take in life. Thank you for all you do to make us proud to be HSD. Gracias por todos su dedicación. Nos hace sentir orgullosos de ser HSD. Sincerely, Mark Watson, Board Chair, Nancy Thomas, Vice Chair, Lisa Allen, Sheen Kim, Eric Lopez, Edira Martinez, and Monique Ward. All right.
There's no sweating allowed.
I am.
All right. I move that the Board of Directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of the Hillsborough School District and direct that the evaluation letter be placed in his personnel file.
Enthusiastically second.
All right. It's been moved by Director Allen and enthusiastically seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors commend the superintendent for his leadership of the Hillsborough School District and direct that evaluation letter to be placed in his personnel file. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. The letter will be placed in your file. Mike, for your hard work as always. Well, that dovetails nicely with our next agenda item, which is discussion of the superintendent's contract. You have the information in your board packet. I will share that as our representative, I worked with Brian Hungerford, our legal counsel, to prepare the document you have in front of you. It represents essentially the same pay increase that our licensed staff received, which is somewhat standard. What else would I want to cover? I'm very appreciative of our counsel that he's done this in multiple districts and brings a perspective of, we know Mike is the best superintendent in the state. We wish we keep making the highest-paid superintendent in the state. It's not really possible on our budget. Michelle knows this probably better than anybody. But he was able to bring the perspective that we are, we are competitive. We are rewarding Mike's long-term commitment to the district, which is exactly what we did in all of our other collective bargaining agreements. And with that, if you have any questions regarding the document, we can discuss it. But generally, you know, it, it was pretty easy to, it wasn't that difficult to reach the agreement. It's a three-year agreement, I believe. Right. So. Any questions? Or I guess do a motion first, then we can discuss.
So I move that the Hillsborough School, the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors approved the individual contract with superintendent effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Allen. Maybe less enthusiastically. The Hillsborough School Board of Directors approved the individual contract with the superintendent effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. Is there any discussion?
So this means we lock you in for another three years, huh?
Yep. It does. And Patrick, your first board member training would be that, as all of us know, the board has one employee. That is it, the superintendent. Every other employee of the district is Mike's employee. So one of the core requirements of us is governance and compliance and hiring and firing the superintendent. And I'm glad to have you onboard for another year, Mike, or now three years. With that, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. And it was uncomfortable for all of us. I can tell you that.
Is it inappropriate for us to say thank you?
No, of course not.
And we mean that. It's, it's truly a, it's a mark of leadership when you can bring this many people together with this, with this much diversity and thought and experience, and we really appreciate you.
Our next action item is to approve the gifts and donations that are on your situation page in the packet on page 59. There's quite a few of them this time, including a giant one from the Hillsborough Schools Foundation. Before mentioned, Michelle, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, those donations are outlined in your packet and just a special thank you to Hillsborough Schools Foundation. That's amazing work. This was as of May 31st, so we do anticipate having June donations that we'll report to you at a later time. But they are as listed.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donations listed. Second.
It's been moved by Director Kim and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donations as listed. Any further discussion? I don't think we can say thank you enough to the Hillsborough Schools Foundation. But we'll say it again.
3D printing?
Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Lisa Allen? Aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. Our next action item is related to the food supply distributor. Casey, are you talking about this?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Looks like it.
So the, as you see in your packet, the district is part of the OCNC program, which encompasses quite a few districts in the state of Oregon. Basically, it is a large buying co-op and as part of that requirement, the OCNC group needs to go out for an RFP for food and supply services, which we had just completed. So this is asking the board to approve the contract to Cisco of Portland for the district's portion of that cooperative buying for the state level. Any questions that I can answer?
Questions for Casey?
Yes, just one question. I noticed that it's 1.2 million the first year, total value of 7.5 million. But I'm not sure I understand the link. Is it just a four-year contract or a five-year contract?
Yeah, there's certain numbers of additional years that can be added. So that would be the maximum number of the contract that we can spend.
Okay, so that's the not to exceed amount. It's 7.5.
For the contract.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors award the contract for broadline distribution of supplies and materials to Cisco Portland for the 22-23 school year and up to four annual renewals.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors award the contract for broadline distribution of supplies and materials to Cisco Portland for the 2022-23 school year and up to four annual renewals. Is there any further discussion? Rose can call the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Moving on with our action items. Oh, yeah. So we are somewhat required to have a board chair and a vice chair. I've indicated that if you'll have me, I'll be willing to stay on in the, in the role. So at this point, we will entertain nominations for the chair and vice chair position. Do I open it? I open the nominations? Okay. I open the nominations for the board chair position.
I nominate Mark Watson for the board chair position.
I don't think nominations require a second, right? Are there any further nominations? Is there any discussion? Thanks. All right. The nominations are closed for the board chair position. So now we go with the motion in the packet. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion listed on page 61?
No, I'm not on, I'm on, is it the?
Or it's the one in the agenda, yeah.
I move that the Board of Directors elect Mark Watson to the board chair position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Director Allen and Director Kim that the Board of Directors elect me to the board chair position. Is there any further discussion?
Say thank you for being willing.
Thanks. Rose, can you call the roll, please? Thanks. Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Wendy Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, I guess I'm continuing. Thank you. Appreciate it, everybody. I now open the nominations for the Vice Chair position. And I would nominate Nancy Thomas for the Board Vice Chair position. Are there any other nominations?
Now I am excited to serve if you would have.
All right, I close the nominations for the Vice Chair position. I move that the Board of Directors elect Nancy Thomas to the Board Vice Chair position. Few people. All right. It's been moved by me and seconded by, well, we'll say Director Ward, that the Board of Directors elect Nancy Thomas to the Board Vice Chair position. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you for being willing.
That's a good word.
All right, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Wendy Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, the motion carries. Thanks for staying on.
You got it.
Another year.
Another year.
All right. Yes. So I will recess our board meeting, and I will convene a meeting of the Budget Committee. Do we have a bunch of people online for this? Is that a thing? No?
Did the Budget Committee not do this one? Or is this just you? Just us?
Michelle, do you have a presentation or some discussion for us, or?
I don't. We've included the resolutions to adopt the budget, appropriate the budget, and impose the taxes and categorize the levy. Those are familiar components of moving forward towards implementation for the budget. The approved version, which is another iteration after the proposed, which is what the Budget Committee reviewed and approved. It's moved forward. There were some technical updates, including the language from proposed to approved. There is an addition of the budget message included in this approved version, and a note to the per-student spending, which I believe Director Thomas brought up around the special education per-student spending. There was some clarification that we added there. And this version of the budget document has been posted online for several weeks now for review. So thank you.
All right, yeah, Budget Committee has been over this quite a bit. All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 22-23 budget, appropriate the 2022-23 budget, and impose the 2020-23 taxes and categorize the levy as shown in the June 21st, 2022 Board Meeting Packet.
I will second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 2022-23 budget, appropriate the 2022-23 budget, and impose the 2022-23 taxes and categorize the levy as shown in the June 21st, 2022 Board Meeting Packet. Is there any further discussion? Rose can call the roll, please.
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Epstein.
Wendy Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye, motion carries. I will adjourn the budget hearing. We will reconvene our board meeting, and we are almost done. Normally, we would start with HCU reports and HEA reports, but we have a little detour first, right?
That is correct. So I'd like to just take a moment to recognize someone who I've had the opportunity to work with for the last six years, and just share some words that describe this person. Problem solver, advocate, joyous, reasonable, common sense, knowledgeable, approachable, peacemaker. I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude for our work together, Jill, for the past six years in your role as President of HEA. I want to thank you for growing good things through your leadership. And I want to take a moment to share some appreciations from folks who have worked with you over the years. I've always appreciated Jill's kind nature and collaboration. She's such a good human. She has worked respectively with our team for a long time and has consistently been a great advocate for teachers, as well as a problem solver and listener. We will genuinely miss her, working with her, and are thankful for her service. Another person stated, Jill is always patient and kind. She is an excellent teacher and understands what good instruction looks like. She is an advocate for both students and staff. Here's another favorite. Jill has a great laugh and a wonderful sense of humor. She cares deeply about people. Jill is genuinely thoughtful and a true advocate for our HSD community as a whole. I appreciate her team approach and problem-solving objectives. It's been a pleasure working with her in her role as HEA President over the years. Jill, as you close the chapter on your presidency and return to teaching in the classroom, you have left behind a legacy of growing good things through collaboration, connection, and community. We know you will continue to grow good things on behalf of students because you care about knowing them by name, strength, and need. Tonight, we celebrate you and thank you for growing good things on behalf of HSD. Thank you.
And the podium is yours when you're ready.
Wow, Mike, thanks for all those nice words. I really appreciate it.
No, thank you very much. Prior, but you know, if tonight was going to be the night. Thank you for that. Jill Bole, Hillsborough Education Association Union President. And yes, this is my last time at the podium as the HEA President. And I want to say good evening to Chair Watson and Vice Chair Thomas, sales Board Members, Superintendent Scott, and HSD. As I look out here, also congratulations to our new School Board Member. Very excited for you. As I look around the room, I think I've talked to and connected and maybe did some door-knocking or collaborated with everybody here in the room. So thank you for that opportunity. I really appreciate it. And I always felt heard and listened to, and I always felt like everybody leaned into the conversation. And sometimes we didn't agree, but we graciously agreed to disagree, and we always went back to what was important, which is students and teachers. And so thank you for that. It is my great honor to serve as the President of the Hillsborough Education Association these past six years, especially during a time of crisis, change, and uncertainty, when the ignited voice of educators has been more crucial than ever. During my term, our union has met every challenge head-on, from having those nine slow, snow closure days. Remember those back in 2016-17? That was my very first year. And in 2018, the US Supreme Court landmarked Sajanis ruling on the unionization of the government workers, and that changed the union and our structure. And then we weren't done. We decided we had Red for Ed after that in 2019. But it was a great thing. We raised our voices together for our students, for our schools, and ourselves as educators. And then, of course, came 2020. The ongoing pandemic, distance learning, hybrid instruction, intermittent building shutdowns, teachers wearing masks over the noise of air purifiers, chronic staffing shortages. But despite all of this, HEA members showed up, and they fought for our students, what the students deserve, and what our profession requires. I am immensely proud of our union's work and the commitment that our educators bring to their classrooms every day. I am confident in the future of our union because I know the human quality of our members, how much love they bring to this profession and their schools every day, and how much they value the humanity of our schools and school communities. You know, our power comes from our shared dedication to students and our belief in what we can accomplish together as a union. And I will not be leaving this union. As you just heard, I'll be, my journey is back to the classroom as an elementary school teacher. I started teaching in 1988, second grade, so wow. And I'm excited to go back. But I plan on volunteering to support the community and for the city of Hillsborough. And I've already reached out to the mayor and kind of asked him what I can do. So when the time is right, I need to focus on the classroom for a bit, though. And, you know, I do so for the fondness of time in my union leadership because I had the joy and privilege of representing Hillsborough Association educators. And I know that my successor, Mary Kay Babcock, she's ready and she's excited to take the lead. And she will continue to help members find their voice, working together in solidarity. And if any of you know Mary Kay, you know that she is vivacious with unlimited energy. She has worked for the Hillsborough School District for 22 years since 2000. She has taught music to all of the ages of Hillsborough students. And you know, she sometimes reminds me, and most time, of Martin Granum. You know, she may not know everyone when she walks into the room, but she can, and you bet she will know them before she leaves. I want to say thank you again to all of you. And, you know, when you come to the end of any experience, there's always a mixture of emotions. Relief that the responsibilities are coming to an end, and sadness that you've come to enjoy will no longer be there for you. But, you know, it's time, and I appreciate everything that, my opportunity and my journey. And many, many times, I was the learner, not the teacher. And so thank you for that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the book. You'll have to kind of read it.
I see Melody is available online. Are you ready?
Yes, I am. Well, good evening and congratulations to Patrick McGuire and the new student reps, and welcome to the Board. And I look forward to working with all of you in the fall. I'll be keeping my report short tonight as we want to get moving on to summer and her long-deserving breaks. So just a quick note about the calendar for next year. We are hearing from some classified staff who are not real happy with the new calendar for next school year. And I didn't hear about this until after the fact, so that's why I'm bringing it up now. And some are needing to cut their vacations short and return home early to work one day without students present, only to have a long weekend before returning to work with students in September. And we are hoping that next year, when the calendar is being built for the 23-24 school year, that this will be taken into consideration. House Bill 4030, the Retention and Recruitment Bill, is a great way of showing appreciation to all of the work that classified staff and licensed staff has put in during the pandemic last year and this year. Just a reminder that classified staff was sitting shoulder to shoulder with students, making lunches, delivering lunches and supplies, setting up hotspots in the homes of those students without internet. Classified staff was also setting up safety barriers and cleaning schools so they were safe when students did return. Some licensed staff also did deliveries to houses of students. So we were all in the trenches and helping to support students as we always did, regardless of the obstacles that we faced. We are asking that the money goes into the pocket of the staffs, the staff that has worked so hard to support and educate the students. HCU is looking forward to working with the district on the distributions of these funds. And with that said, I would like to close tonight by sending my hopes for a safe and memory-filled summer. I hope that those that will be working over the summer can find some time to relax and make their own memories with their family and friends. And have a great summer and good night.
You. So Patrick, the end of every meeting is where we get a chance to say pretty much whatever we want. Board Member time, Superintendent's time. Our students got their stuff and headed out, but we'll have new students next time. So we'll go right to Mike's Superintendent's time.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Jill also. Jill, it wasn't my turn yet. So I did want to say, when you went through the list of things that you've had to deal with, you were either incredibly bad luck, or you were just the leader that was needed at that time. So, you know, when I think about the skills necessary to do the work that you've done over the last six years, there are so many difficult conversations that you have to engage in on a regular basis. The patience that's required for that, the taking in of information that you have to do. And then you have to sort through all that and make a decision that is workable for all parties involved. And the political savvy that's required for you to do that. And you have all of those skills. And we've worked with union presidents for years. And the amount of grace and class and professionalism that you've brought to the role is just exemplary. So thank you for everything that you've done. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
I'd also like to say welcome to Patrick. It'll be a great opportunity to get to know you a little bit. I'll reach out and we'll set up a time to get together and look forward to getting to know you a little bit and doing some good work together. And to Mark and Nancy, who have had been in this role of Chair and Vice Chair. I don't think most people understand how much time that takes. There are weeks where I feel like I talk to Mark more than I talk to my wife. And she loves it, by the way. So that's, it's win-win. Yeah. So anyway, thank you for all the time that you put in. I know it's above and beyond. And it's just greatly appreciated. Regarding the evaluation, thank you so much for the nice comments. And I have always said that my evaluation is the evaluation of the cabinet and the work that they do on behalf of students. While I get the awkward reading about it, I really need to pass that directly on to our entire team. And we see them sitting here, and could not ask for a better team. And I would put their work up against any executive team in the state. So thank you all very much for everything that you do. That is everything. Thank you. And to the Board, this has been a, we've said it's the last three years now, but this has been quite a year. And you have served during a time in the state and the nation where there's been great frustration and great turmoil regarding boards and public officials. And you've just done that in such a stellar way. Just appreciate all that you've done and the manner in which you represent the community. So thanks for all you do.
Want to give anything to that tonight? Lisa?
I don't believe that it has been six years. That doesn't sound right, mathematically speaking. I am shocked. Jill, I can't, I'm so excited for you to go back to the classroom. It is going to be such a lovely cherry on top of your career. Probably so much more fun than this for the last six years. So I'm just jazzed for you. But I absolutely agree with what everyone else has said. You are just a stellar class act. And the kind of leader that I think all of us should aspire to be. So you'll absolutely be missed. But you have such lovely words to say about Mary Kay. I'm sure you're also just fantastic, and we're very excited for you to be here, too. So congratulations and congratulations. And welcome to Patrick. So exciting. And I, hopefully, this next year is a little bit slower than the last. Wedding of the feet, I guess. And then congratulations to Mark and Nancy. Absolutely. It's a, it's a time. Take that on. And we are stewards or birders of the guests.
Well, first, congratulations to the class of 2022. It has been quite a year, and just looking around even in this room to everyone who made it possible for our students to cross that finish line. So thank you all. And congratulations, Director McGuire. Very excited to be serving with you in this capacity. And Mike, thank you for your leadership as well.
Briefly, it's just a real honor to serve with such distinguished colleagues. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. And I talked in my interview process about stewardship, and so it's going to be nice to to serve the community's interest. And I wanted to say I really enjoyed hearing from our union representatives, and congratulations on your service and welcome to Mary Kay. I think unions are what makes our community strong. And so thank you so much for being the voice for our working professionals and for all the people who work in our district. So looking forward to that. So looking forward very much to serving with all of you.
First of all, thank you to Mike for another three years. Appreciate you. And I mean that. Oftentimes we have conversations about the similarities between my day job and your day job. And it means a lot to me to have that kind of conversation. So deeply appreciate it. Jill, to you and HEA, thank you so much. I, I mean that because you embraced me before you, before you really, really got to know me. And I appreciate the, the faith. I, I hope that I haven't let you down and I have no intention of doing that in the future. To Ms. Babcock, welcome to the party. Looking forward to working with you as well. And I, I just want to say that it's really important that we have a relationship like this. Someone told me that people think we are in the pocket of the union or something to that degree. And I thought, hmm, that probably means you don't understand the relationship. It's not acrimonious. It's not negative. What it is, is that we work together because we believe in the children, right? And when you keep the children in the forefront of everything, you don't have all of the, the negative things that come. And so I really, really, really appreciate that. Patrick, welcome to the party. Looking forward to working with you. And I want to say thank you to the board for another year. Vice Chair, this has been a super awesome learning year. And I find myself telling other people what I'm learning and what I'm doing. And I want you to know that out of all the things I've probably done in my lifetime, there is hands down, this is by far the most meaningful. And, and I mean that, and thank you. And thanks to Mark who puts up with me. God bless you. And Rose, dear Lord, there is a special place in heaven for Rose who keeps me and I am the cheap rat that has to be herded all the time. And you do it gracefully and mercifully. Thank you so much. And finally, I, I gotta say this. Thank you for the opportunity to award the diplomas. I think we gave away over 1,200, 1,300 diplomas. And I gotta tell you that that, it, Mark told me, you don't want to miss it. And I knew it would be special, but I wasn't sure what that really meant. And I hit four out of six and I don't think I'll ever miss another one again. It was so, it filled my cup. And a point where I was at my lowest professionally, you name it, everything is going on. But the, to see the young people and to get that, as, as Steven said, that 13 seconds of their personality as they walk across the stage was absolutely phenomenal. It was, it just made it, it came to life. It really, really did. And I know I sound crazy and, but it was the most awesome thing I've ever done and I'll never miss it again. And I just want to say thank you. It was, it was incredible. It was totally incredible and a buying my own robe. Thank you.
And some very cold and wet students.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Mike, thank you for another three years and for guiding us through this process. I believe that takes you through my term, so I won't have to negotiate the next one. So you know, that's a plus. On that front, thank you colleagues for having me again for another year in this role. Jill, it's been amazing working with you and going all the way back to, I think you should take the reference as a compliment, Mary Kay, because I very much appreciate you taking me and Martin on the bus with you guys to the Capitol for lobbying. And, and even being kind when we were, we were the first ones back to the bus and Martin said, let's go get a coffee. And then I think we were the last ones on the bus and nobody really made a big deal out of it. So, so yes, Mary Kay being compared to Martin, I think is a great compliment. Patrick, welcome aboard. Looking forward to serving with you. Lot of great things going on, but plenty of work to be done, too. So you know, hopefully we'll have a chance to chat and familiarize ourselves with some of the issues. You know, it's, it's, it's back in sort of the, the public dialogue. We've done quite a bit of work with our SRO program, but you know, I, I think we're still at a point where, you know, it was just on TV a little while ago for 28 minutes or whatever. I remember watching the, the show about it and thinking, no, we do that. And the host saying, well, what you need to do is, and I'm like, we do that. So at some point, you know, as we, as we review our program annually, I want to make sure that we are exceptional and that we are doing the things that differentiate us and not just think that we do. So, so you know, things like that. And, and we are at a point where it's difficult to find people who want to work for us. We have labor shortages and I was fortunate enough to serve on the Classified Bargaining Committee and get to know some of the folks and hear the stories. And, and you know, at, at some point, we're not alone. Thousands of flights canceled this weekend because there's not enough pilots. So, so there were workforce shortages everywhere. And how we deal with it will, you know, define how we think. But you know, one story that consistently came up is we've been decades of budget cuts. And a lot of our classified staff shared the story that, you know, over the course of those budget cuts, they went from a seven hour position to a 6.5 hour position, to a six hour position. And they really don't have the time to connect or as soon as the students are on the clock, they're on the clock. And there's no time to work with the teacher afterwards or, so you know, as we, as we figure out what to do with our budget, when we're 80 people short, 40 people short, whatever we are short, you'll be thinking about, and maybe we have to, in five years, when the legislature cuts the budget again, we'll, we'll deal with that then. But in the meantime, we need to find ways to reward the people that do want to work for us. And if that's giving people that half hour prep back or whatever, I'd like just to think about those kinds of things. So a lot of challenges ahead. Welcome aboard. We'll all get through it together. A lot of we, not a lot of I here. Thanks, everybody, and good night.